All this public hearing for school choice for the 2024, 2025 school year to order at 6:17 PM on May 28.
So, good evening, everybody. It's good to see you all, public at home, watching this exciting public hearing. Do I want to just say that so school choice is unlike Winchester's school department's own open enrollment policy, which is a local policy that was developed within Winchester, doesn't exist everywhere. School choice is actually a state program that school systems not only can they opt, they have to actually opt out of to not participate as opposed to opt into. So every year at about this time, there's a requirement for us to have a public hearing on school choice and go through in if there is public here, here from the public to what ultimately would still be my recommendation likely because of our space issues would be to not recommend participation in school choice for the 24, 25 school year due to enrollment in space issues constraints within our buildings on top of a construction project that we're in it's of. So just to say that school choice, there are schools that do participate in it, it's less popular in this area than it is in some places. There are some school systems, Avon being one of them, who actually a significant portion of their student population is through school choice. Winchester has never, to my knowledge, participated in school choice, and I believe more than likely it's been because of growing enrollment and enrollment constraints and building constraints that have, I'm assuming, have persisted for quite some time. So again, my recommendation would be to not to notify the department that Winchester will not be participating in school choice for next school year. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Given there's no one here from the public, are we to close the public hearing and then move on to the consideration and the vote?
I think that seems reasonable. Any public want to speak? You know, I see boxes of stuff has arrived. Maybe that's testimony.
Seeing none, I'm happy to make a motion. We close the public hearing on school choice for next school year.
There's a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we need a roll call vote on the carings?
Hold on one second. Are you here for school choice?
No.
Okay.
Public comment, so should we wait out here?
No, we're just closing the school choice portion, so we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Nixon.
Aye.
Mr. Matthews.
Aye.
Dr. Matthews. Ms. Bolanese.
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, it's unanimous. Been a while, I've forgotten everyone's names already now, consideration.
Just to pile on to the superintendent's recommendation, aside from the various construction projects that are going on, both school projects and multi-unit housing, I would remind the committee, our projected enrollment for next year here at the high school is above the design enrollment of this building for the first time in a few years due to COVID, but, you know, we've seen that uptick as well. So I support superintendent's.
And we have a large freshman class coming in, is that correct, to Dr. Hackett? Is that this year?
Your bubble is in six, seven, eight, nine.
Yep.
So I support the superintendent's recommendation to not participate.
Other questions, comments?
Everything Mr. Nixon said.
All right.
I'm happy to make a formal motion.
Please do so.
I'm going to wing this. I move that the school committee decline the opportunity to participate in Massachusetts school choice for the 2024, 25 school year due to concerns over the availability of space.
Do we have to say opt out specifically in the language since we have to?
That's why I wasn't 100% sure.
Let's just say.
To not, okay, that's fine, however you want to say it.
With that, I mentioned?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second? Okay, and I'll just do a roll call again. Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Dr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Ms. Bolanese?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Oh, I'm sorry, and Mikaela, Ms. Jensen.
Aye.
Which we will record as well. So it's unanimous that we are going to opt out this year.
May I ask Mr. Chair, just as a matter of personal privilege, can the superintendent just make a quick PSA for anybody who's watching tonight that this is not, this is different than the open enrollment?
Yes.
Issue?
It is.
I thought you said that at the start.
I thought I said at the beginning, but is it a good summary point?
I wasn't here.
Nope, you were here, I think. But maybe it wasn't impactful. Maybe, you know, I mean. Just to be clear, that this is a statewide program, school choice, which means inter-district choice for students who, if we were participating, students from other school systems would be able to come here and go to school here. And different from our open enrollment, which is a local policy that, as you know, when discussed last time, that you go through every year to make determinations about whether there's availability and room to allow for some internal movement among schools with families, so.
And my apologies, I'm sure you said that and I missed it because I was searching for my school choice document. But I think every year, there's some parents who email about this because they get a little confused, and they're in a very similar place on the timeline. Thank you.
Absolutely. Well, thank you. So, public hearing's over.
Okay, so meeting's been called at order, so I will just pick up on item number three, consideration of school committee reorganization. Every year, the school committee after town meeting does go through a reorganization process by policy. I'm the one speaking now because technically the school committee does not have a chair. As per policy, we did actually, a committee decided to postpone this process, policy calls for reorganization, the meeting immediately following town meeting. But as was the case in a couple of years in a row, the decision was made to not do it immediately after, and partly, and we need to go look at our policy, but partly because of the fact that town meeting is after that vote, and generally, it just makes good sense for the chair, if it's the sitting chair, to present at town meeting for the spring town meeting budget. So that has now landed on this meeting. It was, it was decided at the last meeting by committee vote that to reorganize at the first meeting where all were able to attend, and that's why we're here this evening. So with that, I would open nominations for chair. And what I'd like to say, just to start, is that I'll go around a couple of times, I'll go, and I would like, if someone has been nominated, certainly, committee members can also nominate, or they can just say pass. Once the nomination is on the floor, the person has been nominated, there's not extra credit for getting additional nominations for the same person. So those of you who like to excel at things, just calm down. So we'll do that, and then, once the nominations are finished, I'll close nominations, and we will start in the order in which people were nominated for decision, for votes around the position of chair. Once the chair has been selected, I'll be turning the meeting over to the chair, who will then take you through the vice chair and recording secretary process. So with that, I would open nominations for chair.
I'm happy to nominate Karen Bolanese for chair.
A nomination of Karen Bolanese for chair. Are there other nominations? This is me going back again because I'm not good with wait time. It's part of my undiagnosed and untreated ADHD. Okay. With that, I will close nominations for chair, and I would take a motion to elect Karen Bolanese as the chair of the Winchester School Committee for the 24, 25 school year.
So moved.
A motion, two seconds.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Okay.
I want to say something.
Certainly, that would be discussion.
Thank you to our Chair, passed, for all your hard work.
Thank you. And I would just ask, did Ms. Bolanese accept?
Shoot. I shouldn't have interrupted. Is that how we're doing this? Would you like to?
Yes, I accept the nomination.
Thank you for the thank you.
Yep.
Miss, listen, I'll sneak into the mic.
And we have not done a vote yet. I don't believe I do a roll call of this, do I? Okay, all right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? Okay, all right, congratulations, the meeting is now yours.
Oh, thank you. I'll just sit here.
Next time you're here.
Yeah, another time. Okay, so now we move on to nominations for the vice chair. So we have another leadership role, so I guess I would accept nominations from each and every one for the role of vice chair.
Anything you want to, can I ask anything you want to say about sort of what you're looking for in a vice chair?
You asked this last year.
Well, I think that was, that was a good.
You asked this last year.
Good conversation.
So, I would say, I think I would be looking towards somebody who is very steady, thoughtful, who has a good perspective on the community and with the different issues that we, that come up before us, who can balance me and offer a different perspective. And then I would hope this is a little bit more general, and just have an ear and a pulse on what is going on, and I, as I would hope from each and every one of us.
That's helpful. I'd be pleased to nominate Tom Hopcroft for vice chair, if he's willing to go around the block one more time.
Yeah, I'd be willing to be vice chair. Thank you.
So that's a nomination.
Uncomfortable silence again, Dr. Hackett was talking about. Any other nominations? With that, I would close the nominations, and I would accept a motion for Mr. Hopcroft as vice chair.
I can make it. I'd be happy to make a motion to have Tom Hopcroft as vice chair of the Winchester School Committee for the 2024, 2025 school year.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstain? I guess we had.
So since we skipped discussion, I just want to say thank you to Michelle, who has carried a lot as vice chair over the past year, and in particular, has thrown herself into some weighty issues that require a tremendous amount of time and some hand-holding. For future conversations down the road, you know, I think, I think she's gone above and beyond, and I don't think I'm the only one that is aware of that and appreciates that. I hope our community appreciates that. I do. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I'd just add to that, that, you know, Ms. Bergstrom stepped up when I was in my first term as a first-term chair, and has backfilled for me throughout the year, and has shown great leadership, and I do appreciate her knowledge and experience and help along the way, so I second that.
And I would just say that. And I would just say that I voted against it because I think it's a bad practice after last year. Having had moved from chair to vice chair, I think that that wasn't the greatest practice for succession of the school committee. And there were no other nominations for vice chair. And I don't have anything personally against Mr. Hopcroft, but in terms of process and building succession and sustainability of this committee, I don't think that's been a great practice to move forward with. So we didn't have an opportunity for discussion before we voted really, so.
Appreciate that.
And just on a related note, if I may, Madam Chair, and forgive me if this is already like buried somewhere in the agenda and I've missed it. I think this is the third, third time in a row that we've kind of formally reorganized post-town meeting. Is that right?
Yep.
I think that's right. I think we have previously talked about the prospect of kind of revisiting our reorg policy. I think doing it once is not enough, but this is the third time we've done it and we have some experience with it, including with some members who've been on the committee for a while. So I think this would be an appropriate thing maybe for the policy subcommittee to look at and think about. And does it warrant a change in our reorg policy?
And I would just.
I'm telling you, it should. I'm just saying, we should, we should talk about that because I feel like, I feel like coming up to this, excuse me, coming up to this town meeting, in my mind, it was a little, little bit like, should we or shouldn't we? Well, we did this last year. How did that work? I think it worked okay. It might be good to just have the conversation. I'm sorry, you were going to say.
Oh, no, I was going to say, we actually tasked the policy subcommittee with that last year, and there was not a policy brought forward.
And what?
There was not a policy brought forward by the policy subcommittee last year.
May I ask, was there sort of, because there was some indecision or the?
I don't know. We'd have to ask Mr. Hopcroft and Ms. Bolanese.
Okay, so there you go. That's task number one. Okay, thank you. That was all. Thank you.
I was just reminding the committee, we had the same conversation following reorg last year.
Yep.
Point noted. So, and then just to clarify, when you are asking for the policy to be revisited, are you talking about the timeline for after the election and if we're continuing with the, or if, after the election, if we continue with the same chair and vice chair going into town meeting and then reorganize after town meeting? I just wanted to clarify.
Well, I think Ms. Bergstrom makes a good point. Since our, since you and Mr. Hopcroft discussed this at one point, you can maybe dust off your notes. And now that we've done it a third time, what's really motivating my suggestion is, we've effectively postponed the reorg until after the close of spring town meeting, which I thought was the right thing to do the first time. It was the right thing to do the second time, and it was the right thing to do the third time. And the, you know, the politics and the circumstances can change a little bit year over year. And I think we should be mindful of that. The personalities change year over year. But I'm beginning to feel like, net-net, this is the better thing to do.
Yeah, I think there was some concern over people not being reelected, but that could be addressed in the policy. So we'll, we'll bring that back.
Yep, totally valid point. And I'm also frankly, from time to time, I go back and question why we changed the date of our March election, which, you know, the consequence of that is it forces public bodies into sort of hurry-up mode, right? Because the date of town meeting didn't change. So you've got public bodies who have on the horizon getting ready for town meeting, and all of a sudden, the runway is shorter because the election is coming up earlier. And I remember the argument that was made, we had it on the floor of town meeting, but I can't begin to tell you what that argument was. It passed pretty strongly. I'm just, in my mind, kind of questioning if maybe we shouldn't go back. So maybe that's a part of the conversation as well. If that was, if that was something we wanted to take a position on. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
So I will just read through our agenda for the evening.
I think you missed a role.
Recording secretary.
You missed a role. You're right. So I'm jumping. So we have a third leadership role, which would be the role of recording secretary. So I would accept nominations for the role of recording secretary.
I'd be happy to nominate Dr. Matthews.
Second.
I'm happy to accept that. That's the official way to.
Do it.
Any other nominations? With that, then, I would close the nominations and I would accept a motion for, for Dr. Matthews.
Can I say so moved? Or I make a motion that Dr. Matthews be elected recording secretary for the 24-25 school year? Got that right? Or as needing to be amended if needed, but in spirit.
Is there a second?
Thought Michelle was going to say, be a second?
I seconded, yep.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. And the vote is unanimous. And my watch is talking. I'll just turn it off. So, actually, I don't know what is talking. So, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michaela. Thank you, Michaela.
Family rules.
Anyway, thank you so much. Thank you for your support and confidence and trust. And I think we have a very strong committee. I think all of us bring a lot of skills, network, and, and network and, yes, a lot of skills in networking to the, to the table. And I think as a committee, we can work very well together. So, and I personally pledge that I will do my very best to best my ability to serve this committee and the district and the community in this upcoming year. So, and with that, I'll just read through the agenda for this evening, which is after the reorganization, we will move on to public comment. We'll then have superintendent, chair, and student remarks. We will move through the consent agenda, which I'll read through later. And then we will go through the report, update, and action items, which include an overview of the new state special education IEP process, an overview of the recommended and restructured out-of-district coordinator position, a first reading of changes to the McCall Program of Studies for 2024-25, and then the first reading of the 2024-25 student handbooks. Policies are also upcoming for our first reading. There are several of them, which we'll go through at that time, but mostly related to nursing policies, school facilities project updates, a discussion of the summer 2024 school committee meeting dates, anticipated future agenda items, future meeting dates, and adjournment. So with that, we will come back to public comment. We do have a sign-in sheet, which I think we should probably move over to the door.
I think, Sliz, I think you're the only one here, right, with your students?
And Jamie.
Yeah, they can come up.
All right. So I'll just read the, I'll just read through the rules of public comment, which it shall be a period of 20 minutes. It's not a discussion, a debate, or a dialogue between the individuals in the committee. And it's a residence opportunity to express their opinion on issues on the agenda or of school committee business. So any individual wishing to speak before the committee, please identify yourselves by name and address, and please speak for no longer than three minutes. And all individuals shall speak to the full committee through the chair and shall not address individual committee members or administrators. So with that.
Thank you. Is this on, or do I need to press a button or anything?
You're good.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Bolanese. My name is Rebecca Sliz. I am the interim executive director for the Network for Social Justice. And I just wanted to come briefly tonight for two reasons. The first is, later on your agenda, the consent agenda, you have acceptance of micro grants offered by the network. And I just wanted to say that I was pleased that in the last couple of months, the, we've been able to publicize these grants, this opportunity for educators to do projects or do something that generally supports diversity, equity, and inclusion. And there were several people who, who were able to utilize those grants in the last couple of months, and you're, you're going to accept that, that offering this year. I mean, this, this evening. So I just wanted to, again, say, I was pleased that we have the kind of relationship where the network was able to offer these funds, there was interest, we were able to utilize them, and I think further some of our joint efforts around diversity, equity, and inclusion in Winchester public schools. The second thing is that one week from today, we will be having our fourth annual Pride Fest event from 4:30 to 6:30 on the Town Common. And I wanted to come personally invite all of you to join us for that event. This was really a student-initiated event that the network has supported over the last couple of years. It's a family-friendly, educational, fun event, and we've had a great response this year. So I really encourage you to come. Would love to see you there. And on that topic, I am happy to have Jamie O'Neill here as well to share his thoughts about Pride Fest.
All right. So I'm a junior here at Winchester High School. I guess to start, as someone who helped plan Winchester's first Pride Fest, it has been amazing to see how it's grown since then. As a transgender person, this kind of event occurring in my own town feels great. It shows that this is a safe place to be and helps to remind us all that despite all that is going on in the world and the hate my peers and I are exposed to every day on social media, and even in the hallways of our own schools, not everyone is out to get us, and this is not something we have to go through alone. While I'm lucky to have a family who have supported me in my transition and done their best to understand who I am and how I feel, there are many more that don't have that. According to the Trevor Project's 2022 National Survey of Youth of LGBTQ Youth Mental Health, fewer than one in three transgender and non-binary youth found their home to be gender-affirming, and 45% of LGBTQ youth had seriously considered suicide in the past year. In that same survey, it was found that those who lived in an LGBTQ accepting community and found their, found their school to be accepting, reported significantly lower rates of attempting suicide than those who didn't. Pride Fest is what shows us that our community is accepting, but what are our schools doing? While Winchester tries to be more inclusive with gender-neutral bathrooms, supporting day of dialogue, and establishing classrooms as safe spaces, these actions tend to feel more performative. Gender-neutral bathrooms are all located in inconvenient places, and not all teachers understand or respect, oh, sorry, or respect chosen names, or respect pronouns and chosen names. While the attempts are appreciated, we understand that it is not possible to just make another bathroom appear anywhere in the building. If you asked any LGBTQ student why they felt uncomfortable in the main bathrooms, other than issues with peers, they would cite a complete lack of privacy due to the massive gaps in stall doors. I ask that instead of making assumptions about what we need, please give us a voice in these matters. We want to help make our schools better and more inclusive places for all students, but we can't do that when our voices go unheard. For this reason, I urge the Winchester schools to establish a Student Inclusivity and Diversity Council. This council would represent all minorities present in the school with the purpose of ensuring all school events or activities are inclusive and helping the school administration make a school that truly represents those that attended. Unlike student council and other student groups, this council will be by application, so it will be based on what representation is needed and not who can get the most votes. I hope that you will consider my words and help us make schools more inclusive.
Thank you for the opportunity to share these remarks with you this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I offer something quickly, Madam Chair. Jamie, since you read from a prepared statement, if you want that to go in the record with the school committee minutes, you can give a copy of that to our recording secretary. Now, you can also, you can email it to the superintendent, just because you took some time to prepare that. So we can always attach that to the minutes if you like.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Just so you know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Okay. All right. Seeing as we have no one else, do, do we have any others for public comment? Okay. Seeing as we have no one else for public comment, I will close public comment, and we will move on to superintendent remarks. Dr. Hackett?
Well, thank you again. Good to see everybody. Just a few things. We do have a Lynch New Elementary School topping-off ceremony happening on June 14th at 2:30. That ceremony is, I don't know what the origins of the topping-off ceremony are, but we have had, in Andrew, can I talk a little bit? We have had a steel beam. It is the last beam to be raised as part of the structural steel. There's a tree that's placed on it, and students and faculty, I would imagine, parents as well, have had an opportunity to actually sign that beam. So that beam will be in place for ever's and ever's. And then it's a nice little time capsule of who was involved and the students who were involved. So it's a, it's another big, in some ways even bigger than the groundbreaking ceremony, because this is, means now that the steel is up and the exterior is really going to start to come together. So I hope you can make it. It will be, again, kind of like the groundbreaking, not the best conditions for a ceremony in terms of the site and, you know, the kind of accessibility. It is an active construction site. So I don't know, I just will mention it, Andrew, I don't know if you, anything you want to add, or Mr. Nixon from the FPC?
Yeah, I can just add, it would be at the same location that we did for the.
The same.
So access off Horn Pond Brook.
Same access, same exact spot almost, too. You have that viewing angle of the beam going in right that corner.
What was the time again?
2:30.
2:30.
Mr. Nixon or Mr. Marin, will they be able to get some official photographs of the beams so that we can keep a picture of the beam for posterity perhaps for the new building too, since you won't be able to see that once it's inside?
Yes.
And I'll add that anyone who has not signed it, be available that day before 2:30. Come there and would like to sign it.
At the site?
At the site.
Okay.
I would just add, the two biggest risks of any major construction project, especially in a town like Winchester, where we have issues with water, it's getting out of the ground and it's topping off. So the whole project team breathes a sigh of relief when you're out of the ground, meaning excavation, earth retention's complete, footings, foundations complete, and of course, getting the steel up because so much is dependent. So many other trades are essentially in their tracks waiting for that to happen. So I think the, the labor, the, the, the headcount in terms of the labor that we have on site is going to expand, you know, two and threefold. Because right now, steel erectors, it's a very, it's a limited skill set. They have all the bodies on site they need. But once that's done, it's really going to go faster, if that's even believable, but it will.
Yes, it already seems to have been really fast. I was just driving by today and was just amazed at the progress and seeing how it's come up. So I was surprised to hear you say that the topping off is coming up so quickly. Wow.
What's the next phase? Like what, the shell or what?
Yep. So, so, once the steel is up, then they focus on what they call enclosure. So that's going to be the structural studs on the face of the building, masonry ties for the brick and the sheathing, and then the curtain wall, curtain walls, sort of the panelized glass system. So, and then, of course, the roof. So the interest there is, as soon as you get the building enclosed, you can actually get some temporary heat into the building. I mean, there are certain conditions where you, you actually can't do certain work inside. But there's quite a lot of concrete to pour. So, you know, we've got poured concrete slabs in the building on top of metal deck. So right now, you're just seeing sort of the structural skeleton. They will be putting down corrugated metal decking, and then on top of that, they, they pour the concrete. So, I mean, there's still some technically steel coming onto the site, but it's not beams and columns.
Thank you.
Yep. And you're going to see a lot of continued activity on site. I think you'll, I think, are the footings done for the solar canopies? I think some of them are done.
I saw the, the rebar's in.
Yeah, anyway, it's, oh, and so there is an updated video on the project website, lynch2025.com, anybody can check out, from, I think it was May 14th, which means it's already pretty out of date, but much more recent than what we had before. Some good shots, good video of the progress. And we'll try to get that updated again every two or three weeks for folks.
I'd also just like to add, in relation to the Lynch project, that Mr. Marin and I have been meeting fairly regularly with the Winchester PAC, the Special Ed PAC, and the DAC, the Disability Access Committee, regarding the Lynch playgrounds, both in the front and the back of the building. And they've been working with some great input, particularly from Deb Johnson and Amy Moy, from. from representing that committee, to make sure that the playgrounds that are going in at the new Lynch Elementary are not just accessible but inclusive, which was, I think, a real sort of eye-opening conversation for people involved with the project, that it is not just a conversation about ADA, but about how kids are able to interact with each other and to be able to hear from people who work with kids and parents of kids who need that kind of access and inclusivity on the playground, I think has been incredibly valuable and really going to make both of those playgrounds landmarks for Winchester, wouldn't you say, Dr. Hackett?
I would agree with that. Some great input and a learning process for certainly me, Andrew. Andrew, I'd just thank Andrew for really...
Digging in.
Digging in and bringing it together. As usual, he does a really good job with the timelines and getting the input and feedback. So I know that not only with that, just as a transition from that to, we're also, they met on Lincoln.
Looking at Lincoln.
So Lincoln Playground will be replaced based on the funding that was provided at town meeting in the fall. That replacement is a replacement of the existing playground that's in, within the fenced area. There are some additional possibilities. We've worked with, we have worked with Lincoln staff and administration, but also with the same group. I know you met, just met the other day, so I think some good, really good ideas and some possibilities there that, not that there isn't a budget for the Lynch building, because there certainly is for that playground, but this one is even more, has less room, because it is funds that were appropriated by town meeting. So NVO is also part of the conversation that really is trying to get at the surfacing project, but I understand that there's still some additional exploration that needs to be done with that around drainage, possible drainage issues. As we can see, there's some small sinkholes for, we don't want to lose children on our playgrounds, certainly how we'd like to make sure we get through the day. But, so, a ton of work, and I thank you as well, Michelle, also, just PAC has been a great resource as well as representatives of the DAC, so. I would also just add, this evening, you're going to be looking at several documents, handbooks for all three levels. On the front end, just want to just thank Erin Allen for, my office, for just a tremendous amount of work with really going through and reading it with, yet to be a parent of a school-aged child, I, which is super helpful, like, and really ask questions like, why is this here and does it really make sense to me, which, when you're doing these over and over again and all of you have looked at these a thousand times, it's really just a helpful perspective. So she's done a lot of work on this, and this is the second really full year of a lot of work on the, on the handbooks, trying to bring them together so that it doesn't look like you're moving from one school system to a different school system when you're going from elementary to middle to high school. Obviously, there are differences between the levels, but certain things should just be the same, and that's been a real focus and an effort. And tonight, you're going to have a first reading of those. They have been in front of the policy subcommittee, got some good feedback on them. We would look to try to bring those back to you at your next meeting for approval. You are going to be looking at the program studies as well, and I mentioned both of those things specifically for the middle school, you've already approved the high school, because there's also, we've been communicating and just to share with the public, with the committee and the public, that we are engaged with UMass Amherst in doing some contracted work with them, specifically at the middle school, asking them to dig deeper into the survey that we did on standards-based reporting. Some of you who were able to hear the discussion of curriculum subcommittee meeting a month ago or so, had a chance to hear sixth grade teachers, which is where we're doing the standards-based grading pilot, talk about their experiences and what they see with kids. And I think, I think that was, first of all, that was just a, they did, as they always do, a super job, but also just kind of powerful narrative around, you know, what we're seeing, what teachers are seeing every single day with our young kids, our young students who are making that transition from grade five to grade six, which is hard enough, let alone being developmentally at that particular age, and just the pressures, and you've heard from the YRBS data, you know, some of the stressors that our students feel around achievement and other issues obviously, but specifically around achievement, and just another general reminder that, you know, the decision to move to standards-based grading pilot at grade six was a long time coming, not to get into the whole conversation tonight, but there was a lot of work done on the front end and the decisions weren't about, it's not about academic achievement, we're not expecting kids to do better in school, what we're expecting, want to see is students feeling less stress and pressure, which we would hope would lead to better improved performance, but it's also just, you know, that is the driving goal, as well as trying to be able to provide parents with, and students with, with more detailed feedback. We did the survey and the survey results were clear, and it was discussed at the education subcommittee, curriculum subcommittee, you've not heard them at this level, we'll have to figure out exactly what we do next, but one of the things that was loud and clear is we need more information, and we want to give parents and students and teachers a chance to really give us more information with more probing questions about what is it about this process that, that we can improve, because we are interested, very interested in, in making it better. I mean, that, you know, that's what we're, that's what we really want to try to do. So we will be moving into the third year of a pilot, third year, right?
Third year.
Next year with grade six. And in the middle school handbook, you're going to see some language in and around standards-based grading reporting for grade six, but I wanted to just add on that piece that we are engaged with UMass Amherst for that. We're also engaged with them on kind of digging deeper into the SEL data that we received from the MCIEA survey, kind of aligned with the discussion we had around YRBS. You know, we have these data, but what is it really saying? What are our kids feeling? What are our, what are our teachers feeling, so that we can better understand it and make some changes and do things that should seem obvious, but, you know, we, we really want to make sure that we're, we're hearing from our students and from our staff about the things that we can do that kind of help conditions, you know, from really what is a really survey-level data process with YRBS and MCIEA as well. So those two things are in the works, they're happening specifically at the middle school. And I believe that's all my comments for this evening, other than I'll just, can I just roll into the literacy? Yes, we'll, because it's right there. Just to say that this is exciting, this week, we have the two final parent listening sessions, they are both on Zoom. Actually, one happened today at 3:30, and there's another one happening as we speak. And the final one will be on Thursday from 10:30 to 12:00. The registrations have been good, we've got good numbers, and the, all the in-person teacher listening sessions, as well as the in-person parent listening sessions have been completed. So the collaborative and the design team have a lot of data now and will have, so the end of the data collection process is happening this week. So it's obviously going to take some time to put those data together and to work with the design team. And I would just say that one of the things that I would like to suggest later on, as you kind of look at your summer schedule, in terms of timeline for the collaborative coming back to present or to discuss findings with the school committee, that if the committee could consider a meeting the week of June 17th, we've kind of ruled out June 25th for a few reasons now, a couple members conflicts, but if we could schedule something the week of June 17th, would be lovely if we could do it on Tuesday, the 18th, just to be consistent with your Tuesday schedule. But I don't look for an answer now, but just thought, may I mention it now, so you can kind of look as we get further in the agenda?
I just ask a question, though, are we thinking daytime? There had been some talk of daytime.
Evening for that one.
Evening for that.
Yes, but whatever.
In that case, I, I'll just tell you now, we're away that week.
Okay.
So if it's an evening meeting, it'll be, even if it's Zoom, it'll be after bedtime.
After your bedtime? Okay.
Because we'll be...
Your children do, or?
Times don't change.
No, we'll, I'll be asleep in...
I assumed.
Are you saying that...
Six hours ahead, so.
Oh, okay. Then are you saying that...
It could be Zoom, I mean, it's really up to the committee and what time of day. I just, we'd like to do something that, that week.
I don't know that I'm available that week either.
Entirely, so, okay. That's it for me. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great. Thank you. I'll just make a few comments. Two weeks ago, I think I had mentioned that the Citizen of the Year Award was going to my Harrison, and I thought that the award ceremony was that night, but I was apparently really early, not always early, but it is tonight, and so just congratulations to my Harrison for her service to the community. And then I also, this is senior week, as Ms. Bergstrom and I are intensely familiar with, for the high school seniors. And so I just wanted to say a big congratulations to all those kids who have worked so hard over their, their schooling here in Winchester, and wherever and whatever they are going to be doing in the next year. So I think there will be great things that will be coming their way. And then just a few quick comments. Graduation will be June 7th, and then I believe the prom will be June 5th, and prom, with the promenade at 6:00 PM for our interested community members.
If I may, I just wanted to double-click on my and say, I was at the Memorial Day Parade over the, over the weekend, which was, which was lovely, and she is a leader there, running that as well as many of the other things that she is being honored for, but she was in usual spirits, running around, taking pictures, saying hi to everyone, so, yeah, congratulations to her tonight.
Anything else from any other members?
So, so if it's okay, I would just say, I wanted to sort of, I know we, we have a policy of not necessarily, not necessarily responding to public comment, but I wanted to publicly thank Jamie and Rebecca for coming in and speaking tonight. I am expecting to actually pass something to the policy subcommittee in relationship to Pride Month, and so it's inspired by the work that the select board did last year, underscoring the importance of Pride Month and sort of building upon some of the, the work that's been done on this committee already, in the student handbook, specifically in the ACA range of the, the policy manual, but specifically calling out Pride Month. I was always aware of the fact that the students were actually the ones who inspired the community celebration of Pride Fest in Winchester, but I think it's something that should be a point of pride for us on the school committee, that it's our students who actually asked for this kind of celebration to come to Winchester, and folks actually come from towns around us as well, because they don't necessarily have the kind of event that we have. And so I'm hoping that, you know, given the fact that Ms. Boll and Azea and I are on the policy subcommittee, I'm hoping that we can have a discussion about, you know, whether there's, there's something we can do to honor that specifically and the contribution that our students are making to that celebration each year. So I look forward to, hoping that we might be able to get something done, maybe not by the end of June, but sometimes so that a policy is in place for, for future years around the celebration of Pride Month and celebrating the accomplishments of our students around that, so.
And Dr. Matthews, you're also a board member at the network for social justice, is that correct?
I am a board member of the network for social justice, so I am, I am definitely involved, and I'm, you know, for full disclosure purposes, I am on the planning committee for Pride Fest as well, so I'm excited.
And also, it was nice to hear from Jamie tonight, because the reason that that policy exists to begin with is because the Students of Spectrum and GSA came to this committee when, back a few years ago, and we, the committee at that time, the policy subcommittee, of which I was a part, worked with the students to create that policy and the staff, and I think it's really important that, as you're saying, Dr. Matthews, that those things do come from the kids, because I, I appreciate the opportunity to make proclamations and things like that, but as Jamie said, sometimes those can just fall as empty promises to the kids, and it's what we actually do about them. So I would hope with the Pride proclamation, you guys would also consider from the policy subcommittee, bringing forward a committee of this committee that would also look at those issues, so that we're not just handing more empty promises to our kids.
Yeah, I think that would be very important, so, because I think we, we obviously heard from Jamie tonight, you know, a perspective on places where we could make improvements, and that's great.
Right, and they need to be able to have a forum to do that.
Yes. So, good work for the policy subcommittee to be doing this year.
Yep.
Very much so.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, would you or the superintendent care to just say a word about our community meeting last week on the gym project?
I'd be happy to.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Good turn, some good questions.
There were some good questions.
Please take it. I've talked enough.
No, I was going to pass it to Mr. Nixon, but sure, I could go ahead. So there was a meeting last week over at the high school on the high school gymnasium, and Mr. Nixon introduced, along with Mr. Aria, information just on the new configuration of the gym and the support from select board, which Mr. Fallon, John Fallon, was there to discuss, to talk a little bit about that. There were also community, and also town meeting was recognized for its near unanimous, or its unanimous support of funding for the gymnasium renovation. So there were some good questions that came out of that, there were some community members who had come to either ask questions about perhaps including badminton as one of the, as one of the configurations for one of the floors, or for one of the areas on the floor, and then also about basketball and wrestling and community groups that would be participating and using that floor. If you have any other comments, please feel free.
I just want to thank the superintendent, because I, we got some, on those points and a few others, there were some good questions from the community. This is a point in a project where there can often be some great ideas, but you got to be careful of scope creep, because nothing's free. On the other hand, there were some really good suggestions and good questions. So you have a memo from me that we'll get to later in the meeting that we don't have to get into the weeds on, but there actually was a working group meeting literally this morning, Dr. Hackett participated in, and I think he's showing a lot of leadership about how we can actually hear and respond to the community with some of those requests. So I'm hopeful the community will be, in fact, there were even some questions about air movement in the space and HVAC and what can be done, because it can be hot and humid and a little stifling. I was in there for a graduation a few years ago, more than one. So while we cannot air-condition the space, there are some things we can do to make it more comfortable. And we also had some representatives of private sports groups approach us after the meeting and express some interest in making some donations towards the project, whether it's to get some elements into the project where we may be a little bit short, or perhaps to fund something as an ad-alternate. So I feel like there's just a lot of community interest and support in this, and I just want to thank the superintendent, who's kind of saying, well, you know, the reason you have this meeting is to hear from people. And I think there, there were some good questions and good suggestions that you're, you know, really showing an openness towards, which is good. I think it'll be a better project for that, so thank you.
Absolutely. It was a good, it was a good session, and I think people feel really good about the project, so a lot of logistics and we're off and running pretty quickly, the timeline's going to be, this is moving quickly, so.
And we can talk about the timeline later in the meeting, but it's, I'm glad we were able to pull that off, and it was a good turnout.
Yeah.
Are we still on superintendent and other comments? Because I had a question for the superintendent.
Sure, go ahead.
While we're talking about space renovations, there was some money in the budget and some money offered from the select board about renovation of the theater at the high school. Is there a plan, a project timeline, any updated information on?
Mr. Marin?
We're regrouping on that now, so we've kind of confirmed the scope of work, and then we're going up, we're just doing a quoting process for, it's kind of two parts. One is the lighting components that we're doing upgrades for, and the other's kind of the safety and the battens and rigging. So both are just going through an RFQ, and then I think we can do the rigging this summer, and then at least get the lights kind of ordered, and we're kind of waiting on some lead times for things, but hopefully majority of the work done by end of summer.
Awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Marin, does that mean everything, the flight loft will work?
Sorry, what was that?
How many sets can fly up and down at the end of the summer?
I think we'll be adding... I think we'll be adding 10. That'll be now mobile.
Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda then, which includes consideration of the acceptance of a $750 mini grant from the Network for Social Justice to the Morocco School Library, consideration of approval of the 2025 Winchester High School French trip, and consideration of acceptance of $1,025 outdoor tent from the 2022-23 Vincent Owen Fifth Grade Committee. I would accept a motion for the consent agenda.
I'm happy to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the same note I made last time, that on the French trip, superintendent reserves the right to cancel a world events dictate. And there's some stuff going on on that side of the ocean. So you never know.
And also, I'm presuming the outdoor tent has been cleared through DPW and with the other work that's due to happen on the Vincent Owen playground?
So this is a, oh, I'm sorry, did you have a comment?
Did we make a motion? Sorry.
Well, I thought there was a question about the tent.
There was a question. No, I thought Mr. Nixon made a motion. No, I was going to actually ask, sorry, this is my like ethics brain. I'm wondering whether it would be possible to just split item A from items B and C because I should probably abstain from item A since I sit on the board of the organization that's offering us the money. So I guess I would, in a friendly way revise Mr. Nixon's motion unless he's thinking that's not necessary.
I think all you need to do is we can take them separately.
Okay.
So we can just pull that one if we would like.
So I would just say for what, so I appreciate you saying that. So typically, the ethics rules are geared towards, you know, elected officials making a declaration because, you know, the vote you take may in some way be your own sort of personal betterment in some way, which I'm not sure it is in this case. I mean, it's an altruistic measure that I think would be appropriate for you to vote on, but.
Yeah, I agree. I was on the fence, but I just wanted to make sure it was to Ms. Bergstrom's point about my membership on that board.
More that was to like.
Extra clear.
That you had a lot of information about it.
No, but it jogged my memory. So it's at the committee's pleasure, but I'd be happy to vote on them separately and just abstain from that one to be 100% clear.
In other words, because you're not personally benefiting from the expansion of the Morocco School Library, you personally, I think you're safe.
Yes, yes, that is true, now that I think about that this is going towards the Morocco School Library. And then with regard to your question about the VO tent, as I understand it, they, well, this for on field day, they have a little tent set up just for their speaker system, sound system and everything. And right now, it is already, it's been there for a number of years, but it's being now, it's now sort of deteriorated and held together by duct tape, as I was informed. And I have been a parent there seeing the tent, but it's just a little small tent.
But is it the one on the playground or on the grass?
No, it is not the one on the playground. It is one that is set up, is pulled out, is a temporary setup tent each year. I think that is okay. So with that, I would accept a motion, which maybe you already did. So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The vote is unanimous on the consent agenda. All right. Next, we will have an overview of the new state special education IEP process from our incoming Director of Special Education. Oh, there she is. Where did she go? Like looking and looking. So Ms. Marlena Isolgas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I do come slide? Is that going to be projected or?
Andrew, if you click on the.
Can you turn the mic just so they can hear you on mic cam?
For the thousands of viewers watching live.
Yes. I would just remind everyone what a pleasure it is to have you here, but also that you are not a full-time employee yet of the Winchester Public Schools. You're doing this out of the goodness of your heart and your commitment to coming and your transition to Winchester. So if there are questions about where this is going from here, just please keep in mind that she's not yet employed by us, so.
Though it feels like it.
I know, and I know, that's your, that's up to you.
It's my dream.
Just for you.
Will come true.
But this, the intent is, and I'm so grateful that you came to do this, and I think it's a great way to kind of start with you. But it really is an overview, and there'll be more to come, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for that introduction. It's nice to see everyone again. Good evening. I'm happy to be here and eager to get started July 1st. And part of what has been wonderful is having the opportunity to do some transition work. I've been working very closely with Jen. I've attended a meeting with the special education supervisors. We've been having regular calls and check-ins, and I do have some shadow days planned starting in June. So I'm very much looking forward to having feet on the ground and getting going. So thank you for this opportunity. I'm going to give a very brief overview of some of the positive enhancements of the new IEP, particularly as it relates to student voice. We'll go through some of the different sections so you can see what those look like, and we'll talk about the implementation and rollout of how that will look in Winchester coming up for next year. Next slide, please. Okay, so the big question here, why change? If it's not broke, then why fix it? And so the question and begs the answer here is, in education, it's important that we are constantly assessing practice, that we are looking at what tools that we're using, what systems and processes are in place, and evaluating, are they effective and are they best serving the needs of our students? And so using the current IEP form, which has been in use for over 20 years, DESI made a conscious decision to reevaluate the form and determine whether or not there should be modifications and revisions made to that form. And it was a very intentional and thoughtful process in doing so. There was many, there were many opportunities for stakeholder input along the way, and there was an early adopter group, small cohort, that went through and used this new form, provided feedback. And then what will be happening next year is all districts across the state will be utilizing this new form. And some of the positive changes, just going back to that prior slide, is the intention of these changes, both technical and adaptive to the form, is to really increase student voice and engagement in the IEP process and not just for students who typically would participate and share their input at age 14 and after as part of that transition planning process. As you'll see when we get to these slides about vision, that this work is going to our early, going back to our earliest learners at age three, asking them in an age-appropriate way about their vision and what it is that they would like to accomplish throughout the course of their year and have their needs met throughout the IEP process. Next slide, please. So some, here's an overview of some of the changes here. So this is a new and improved version of the Massachusetts IEP with emphasis on amplifying student voice as well as providing robust data collection. It is challenging staff in a way that, as far as collecting data, that it speaks to what a child is able to currently do, their baseline, and then where we would like to see them over the course of the next year, how their progress will be monitored, who will be monitoring that progress. And so it's a very important data-driven process, since that is how we make decisions that are in the best interest of children through the IEP team process. The hope of the new IEP is to more actively engage students in planning for their education. The old document, as I mentioned before, has been in place for over 20 years, dating back to 2021. And these changes are both technical as well as adaptive in the form, and I'll show you some examples of those. Many components of the old IEP have been enhanced in the new form. It's not a complete overhaul, but there are absolutely some very positive changes that have been made. The special education process, this is super important, does not change. So all of the laws and regulations and the team process, that remains the same as it has been. It's truly the form and the way that that information is captured and reflected. That is what is different. And as I also mentioned, that there was a small cohort of early adopter districts this year with full implementation statewide coming in '24, '25. Next slide, please. And here is a very brief compare/contrast of some of the changes between the old or the current document and the new document. So it's not growing to be twice as long, but it is a formatting shift from going from the portrait layout, which is currently eight pages, to a landscape layout, which will be 16 pages. So it's not double the information, it just looks different in the way that that is going to be communicated to families. On the current IEP, the way that parent and student concerns are captured is in a section which is labeled as parent and/or student concerns. On the new IEP, the student is listed first and is titled as student and parent concern. So there's a shift there with the student as being the primary focus in the development of the plan. For the vision statement on the current IEP, the way that that is developed is the team vision incorporates student voice at age 14 and over. Before the age 14, the team vision is, the vision is developed by the team, including heavy emphasis on input from the parent as well as the school personnel. Shifting for the vision statement for the new IEP, the student voice includes the vision statement starting at age three, and that is placed first with emphasis on student voice first. And there is an additional section in there which asks for the team vision thereafter. So again, putting the student at the forefront of this process. The transition planning form, as it is currently configured, is separate from the IEP. It is an attachment. Moving forward on the new form, the transition planning form is part of the IEP, and elements of the transition planning is embedded in the IEP document throughout. On the current form, there are goals and objectives, and those goals and objectives are also on the new IEP. You will notice that that form is highly structured. There are four columns, and all of those columns must be completed, so that adds extra emphasis on school personnel to be collecting data. That is very specific, speaking to what the child is able to currently do. And on the old IEP, the accommodations and modifications section is captured on two separate pages, and on the new IEP, it is currently, the accommodations and modifications are on one dedicated page. So that is an example of more of a formatting shift. Next slide, please. And this is what I was referencing here about student voice and the concern section. So this is taken directly from the new IEP document, so you can see the formatting here. And the major shift is that the student and parent concerns are, is the section here rather than the old IEP, which had parent and/or student concern. So it was more of an option whether or not to include that student voice as opposed to starting with the student here. And it's very important when we think about student voice, particularly as students get older, that they have an understanding of their disability so that they develop self-awareness of what their disability is, that they understand that they have a disability, how that impacts them within school, within activities outside of school. And once a student has self-awareness of their disability, then they move along on the continuum to developing self-acceptance of what that means for themselves as a student as they age through school. And then ultimately, the goal is to arrive at self-advocacy, where the child is able to advocate for what their needs are, what accommodations they need in order to access the curriculum, what supports they need and how, and that they feel comfortable reaching out to adults who are there to support them. And I put in red here that prior planning with students and families is encouraged ahead of the IEP meeting, and this is a great opportunity to collaborate with families ahead of time to have them start thinking about their child's vision, have the student thinking about what their vision is for the process, and so that everyone is going into the meeting prepared, having done some thought ahead of time to have an informed conversation. And another positive enhancement here related to student voice is the vision statement. And with regard to the statement here, there are two different vision statements that are age-appropriate. One for students age three to 13, and the other is for students who are 14 to 22. And then at the very bottom, there are additional team vision ideas. Some of the questions that you'll see here for students age three to 13, the questions that they will be asked this year, I want to, that the student will respond to by saying, "This year, I want to learn." "By the time I finish either elementary or middle school, I want to." So these are open-ended questions to really have the child start thinking about what skills they would like to further develop to help them achieve their vision. And what I included in red here, the use of I statements, which is very important to have the student get in the habit of using reflection and thinking about where they would like to see themselves in the future. And it's also important, too, to keep in mind that students who are our youngest learners, that they may need support along the way with this process from a trusted adult, and they may have some difficulty expressing their vision due to their age or disability. And there's different ways that we can go about gathering input from students who fit into those categories. And it can be done through, here are some examples, student drawings, writing projects, interest inventories. And this is another portion of the IEP where it is helpful to participate in prior planning with students and families ahead of time. Next slide, please. This is an example of the transition planning form, which is completed by students beginning at age 14, where children identify their post-secondary vision and they outline a plan to achieve that vision. And the purpose of the transition planning form is to help students with disabilities successfully transition into their post-secondary plans, which could include education, vocational training, employment, or independent living. And so the transition planning form, this is, this captures what the student would like to do after high school, and the IEP is designed to help the child achieve that vision and their post-secondary goals. Next slide, please. This is a formatting shift here, the way that the goals are reflected. So the content is the same as the current IEP, but this is the page written in a different format. So what you'll notice is the, where it says baseline, that is currently called a current performance level. And what that section is, is it captures data on what the child is able to do based upon whatever their skill deficit is. So an example could be, a student is able to communicate using utterances in five out of 10 opportunities. And so that would be a specific example. And so what the, what the staff member who is working with the child will have to do was provide very detailed information on how a child is currently performing and then where, what would be a specific measurable time-limited goal that they're able to achieve within the next IEP period, which would be a calendar year. Next slide, please. The section here is, again, a formatting shift where it is a summary of accommodations and modifications that are on the child's IEP. The, for accommodations, that would be tools that students use in order to access their curriculum. It could be, for example, X- It could be, for example, extended time, use of visuals. Modifications are changes to what content is taught, how the content is taught, and how the child is assessed. Currently, on the IEP, this section is across the span of two pages. On the new IEP, this will be condensed into one page. And the impact is shown not only within the classroom setting, but as well as non-academic settings, extracurriculars, and if the child is participating in any kind of vocational opportunities, what would be required in order to access that programming. Next slide, please. Here is a summary of what I have learned about what has been in place in Winchester as far as preparing for the rollout of the new IEP. Special education staff participated in numerous trainings over the course of the year, using a train-the-trainer model. So, engaging in the trainings and then coming back to the district, and then conducting trainings within to share that information with school staff. A large group of stakeholders volunteered to create a new IEP implementation team. The team conducted trainings in professional development for educators and served in the role of coaches, in-house experts on the new IEP. And with the support of a consultant, there were three subgroups that were formed, and they focused on different elements of the IEP, including the vision statement, which we looked at, accommodations and modifications, and goals. So, we were able to see each of those sections that the subgroups were focusing on. And then, for the upcoming school year, there will be a natural rollout of the new IEP form as IEP meetings will be held. All initial IEPs that are written will be developed using the new IEP form. Annual reviews and reevaluations will use the new form as those meetings take place throughout the course of the calendar year. So, it's not going to be a situation where, at the start of the year, all of the IEPs are going to be shifted to the new form. It's going to happen gradually, as those meetings would take place anyway, based upon the IEP expiration date. So, it could be the case for children whose meetings don't happen until January or March, that they will still be, their IEP will still be in the old form, and then that transition will take place for their next meeting. The special education supervisors are going to be attending professional development series on the new IEP with consultant Alan Bloom. He is a guru in IEP writing and is supporting many districts across the state and the country with IEP writing. The district will be exploring opportunities for students across all age levels to go through the vision development process. So, that is going to be something that is explored further, but that is an intention moving forward to really emphasize student voice. And the new IEP implementation team will continue supporting general education and special education staff district-wide during the transition to the new form. Next slide, please. And I did include some references in here that are helpful. There is the new IEP template, the blank template. So, you can see what that 16-page form looks like, if it's helpful to have the visual, as well as some resources from DESI, which are the IEP technical guide, as well as more information about the new IEP improvement project. And the top line there is an ancillary slide deck with some additional slides that I did not cover tonight with some more information and more detail on that compare/contrast chart that I covered earlier.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have any questions, overview questions from the committee? Mr. Nixon? You look like you have a question brewing in your head.
I do. I have a question. So, thank you very much, and it's nice to see you again.
You're welcome.
Mr. Bloom, that you just mentioned, who I had not been familiar with, was checking out his website, offers something called the Bloom Method and even an app.
Yes.
And in reading it, it's very, not a criticism, it's very structured. It's very organized. Specific sort of, I might say, a structure or a pathway around gathering information for the process. And, and so, I wonder, when institutions use a tool, I'll call it, if I can, call it a tool, use a tool like this, are we inherently sort of influencing the outcome because we use something that appears to be so clearly structured? The new IEP form, of course, is very structured. DESI is structured, and our kids are all very different, and our teams are also very different. Could somebody talk about that last point you made? I'd like to know more about this training with Alan Bloom, and are we, are we getting on board with licensing some of the things that he sells? And is there not, I hope, I hope I'm not being too cryptic. I have a concern that we might, we might become too prescriptive in a way, that it changes the outcome about how an IEP might be developed, that might, that might otherwise be developed differently with the authentic professional input of the teams we have. So, maybe somebody could explain like what it is we're getting and why that's necessary, particularly if it's expensive. Yeah. You look like you're dying to say something.
I'll answer the first part, and then I'm going to turn it over to Marlena.
Does that make any sense, what I'm asking?
I can, yeah. At this point, all we're committing to is for the team to go with Marlena, the supervisors to go with Marlena, and to learn more about just the process overall. We haven't made any decisions or commitments about buying any products or getting into any of those pieces. But I will turn it over to Marlena, because she's worked with him more closely in your current district than we've worked with him in this district. So, I don't know enough about how he rolls that out.
That's a great question, and thank you for that. What I can say about working closely with Alan Bloom for the last six years in Lawrence is he has been incredibly helpful in providing structures that assist the IEP teams in developing consistency across the district with regard to writing the IEPs. The IEPs still maintain the individual aspect of that document, speaking to the child's specific needs that are disability-related. But what he does is provide staff with a formula in the sense of how to go about writing a current performance statement or a baseline statement, how to write a goal that is data-driven, how to collect data in a way that is going to be useful to inform the creation of a measurable goal. And what we found in Lawrence is that there was great inconsistency across the district from special education team chair to team chair, from school to school, from high school to elementary, and how the IEPs were written, just in terms of formatting. And so, this has been very helpful to be able to pick up a document and understand that, at least that formatting and the data collection process is consistent, with the understanding that it is also very much individualized to that particular student. So, it's been helpful in that way, in helping people think about, how do you choose what goals to work on? When you conduct an evaluation and you have identified that the student has needs, which one of those, how are those needs going to be addressed within the IEP? What is going to be covered through an accommodation? What could be covered through a modification? What rises to the level of requiring a goal? What would need to be, in what sense would direct service be required? And so, he's helping teams to think in a very logical, sequential, systematic way to make those kind of data-driven decisions that are, that are in the best interest of the student.
Okay. Thank you. And then, my other question is, I can appreciate how the student voice is now reflected in the new document, and that, and I had forgotten what that, the age was. So, they're sort of physically even encouraged to be at IEP meetings, so I guess it's 14. Is that right? Can you just talk a little bit about, what about the younger student? Are we, are we making a shift, or would we be encouraging younger students to be at initial meetings or reevals? I mean, it's one thing to see a student voice on a document, but, you know, it's a little box, and I'm actually unclear even where that statement's coming from. Is that a conversation a student is having with special ed staff? It can certainly be a conversation with parents, because now it's student and parent goals. Can you just maybe speak to that? It sounds like a lot of it's not changing.
So, the students are invited to participate in the IEP process, starting at age 14 and moving forward. And so, that'll be something that we'll need to think about as a district, what that will look, will look like with incorporation of student voice. Is that something that is happening in preparation ahead of the meeting? Is that something that the student is attending prior to age 14? There are meetings where students are able to attend and participate prior to age 14 with parent approval, and so that's something that we'll have to think about as we plan for that rollout. It's a great question.
I think if we think about that, we should just be mindful about the ages kids are when they make certain transitions. And although we can think about it as, is the child this many years old? We might also just think about it as, what grade is this child in? What grade is this child going into? And I'm thinking primarily about the jump from middle school to high school, where those kids have that opportunity to participate, but we could be a little more forthright if, if we, as a district, want more of that sort of physical participation and agency, right, in the process? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the committee?
I'd just like to say that I'm really excited about this. This isn't the first time I've seen a presentation on this. I've seen it through a couple of different organizations, and it's exciting to see now here in Winchester. And I love the focus on the participation in the general education curriculum, that the new IEP and the new IEP process takes into account. And I think it's been a priority here for a long time to be more inclusive in our general, in our special education service delivery and program, and the fact that they think about the schedule modifications now, and the what students can access, and what students can, can't access, but how can they? And all of those things being purposely part of this new IEP, I think is going to make families and kids feel more ownership over this process, instead of it being focusing on what kids can't do, focusing on what kids can do, which is someplace we've wanted to be, but the documents and the goals and the ways we've been writing the IEPs haven't been able to keep pace with that. So, I'm, I'm happy to see this. I'm happy to see these changes. I know they've been a long time in coming, and that they've gotten a lot of sort of vetting through the special education community and groups throughout the state, and they've taken a lot of feedback in the process to this point, too. So, I'm excited to get it in the hands of our parents. What kinds of parent and student education are we thinking about? I keep looking at both of you, because I'm not sure, sure to address this, too, these days. Thinking about helping parents, because I could see a lot of parents wanting to be like, can I have this tomorrow? And then, other parents being maybe a little bit more anxious about it. So, how do we plan to incorporate parents and kids into the, here's your new IEP process?
I'm happy to jump in about this. So, that's probably next on our radar, is to think about the parent piece. We're already on like the student piece and thinking about that. And we're actually, the staff has been awesome. We have a huge group that signed up to be part of this. They're so engaged and excited, and they're like helping their colleagues, and so that's been great. So, we're next on the student piece, and then we have our next Tuesday meeting that everybody goes to. We'll be talking about this piece with all the general education teachers, with the special ed, with them, everyone will be together, working on it, and talking about what we do for all students, not just students with IEPs, and how we approach it. And then, I think the next piece that we need to think about tackling, probably July 2nd, is, you know, what we want to do around the parent piece and how to roll that out in addition to the student piece.
That's really exciting. And then, my other question was a follow-up on Chris's, with the consultant that you're bringing in. I, I love the idea of being more purposeful about being able to write measurable goals and goals that we can collect data on. And I'm actually wondering that, I think you sort of answered this, Jen, Dr. Alonema, but are general educators going to be included in that, too? Because they're often the ones that have to have like the IEPs and understand the IEPs and know how to read the IEPs in the classroom. It's not just the special educator, but when we talk about inclusion, we need everybody. So, how are general educators going to be included in that? Or how have you seen it done in Lawrence?
So, we have that group of the train-the-trainers kind of group, the new IEP team, and that's made up of different roles. Like, we have like an admin assistant on that. We have some general education. We have administrators on that. We have special education teachers, obviously. But that team, we wrote that under our, every year, we, almost every year, we qualify for a grant. It's the 274 grant. It's the program improvement for special education. And so, we wrote that grant to support this team coaching and supporting everyone in this process as we go forward, not just special ed teachers, the general education teachers. And also, when we map out our PD in our meetings for next year, there will be supports in place for this as well. And that's already started. There's been PD that the general educators have been into. Yeah. It's been a great process, actually, for something that, you know, can be hard to adjust to something new.
Yeah.
Yeah. People are tired, and it's busy, and, but they've been really supportive about it, so.
I would add that Lawrence has done the same thing with utilizing the train-the-trainer model, has been highly effective in meeting with different stakeholders to share information that directly impacts their work. And so, working with cohorts of general educators, special educators, preparing presentations for, for parents, for families, and for district administrators. And so, everyone has, is operating from the same knowledge base of how the new IEP looks and what the work is, and what work is being done district-wide to help prepare for that implementation process.
I think that's the most exciting part of this for me, is that it's really an opportunity for general ed and special education teachers to come together in a purposeful way to talk about special education delivery, too, because that's, that's what the IEP is all about. So, I, I think that's, it's a really exciting format and time to be able to do it.
It ties in so nicely with our work on PBAs and just assessments about student voice and choice. This is just like, just completely reinforces all the things that we've been working on around that, so it's great.
I just had a quick question, just on the timeline with the professional development with Alan Bloom. Is that projected to be over the summer, or is that going towards, more towards the fall?
It's a five-part series in the fall, so it's a five hours of training over the course of September through December.
September, December, okay. And then, with the rollout of the new IEP, that's like running parallel to the professional development? Okay. And then, that's why it's rolling out slowly. Okay. Got it.
Like, all of our students won't be on the new IEP till a year from now.
From a year, yeah.
With the understanding it's going to be an ongoing learning process for all of us, you know, figuring out how to really execute all of the different elements in a way that, you know, makes sense, and that, you know, people feel comfortable. It's a big change that, you know, whenever there's change, people can feel uncomfortable, uneasy, and so it's about helping provide reassurance and the tools and training to how, for how to go about doing so in a way that is effective.
And so, just with communication with parents and guardians, is that starting early?
Start before the year starts. And then, we'll probably, I don't want to predetermine what we decide as a group, because people have different ideas. And then we'll probably, I don't want to predetermine what we decide as a group because people have different ideas, but we'll probably also roll things out reminders as people's meetings are coming up. Like so that they get in that frame for that. Also, just a shout out to our student management system, which it was just the luck of the draw that it worked out this way. But it was the only system up and running the share with all of this already ready. So all these other districts are like frantically switching their student management systems because theirs isn't ready. And it just moves over as much data as it can for the teachers and the teams onto the new template so that what they're moving is very little. It's just, and there are districts using it right now this year. It's the only one that was ready, so that's a big relief for us.
That was gonna be my last question, Jen. Besides the, besides the idea grant that I know districts have to support this, do you see any other budget implications for this in the next year?
I mean, I don't think so. There'll be some PD things that probably pop up, but we have a PD budget that is meant to be flexible and responsive to the needs as they arise.
Yeah.
And that two seventy-four grant will also, I mean, it's not a ton of money, but it is enough seed money to do some work with people. So I don't anticipate it being anything as a budget. Have you guys thought of anything as being?
No, nothing that, that jumps out at this time.
Dr. Matthews?
So I actually just wanted to ask, there's obviously a lot of stakeholder groups involved in this. And so what do you perceive to be the biggest threats or, or challenges that we're going to be facing over the next decade and the year to this whole process among special educators, among general educators, among parents and students? Are there specific things that you've already learned that we need to be watching? Or things that you've already considered in your own heads that we need to be watching? I guess that would be my multi-part question.
I think just change in general is hard for people. Helping, as I was saying, reassure and provide the, the tools and training and support, ongoing support for how to, to go about following the process. And just reinforcing the fact that the special education process itself is, is not changing. The teams are still going to be making the same eligibility determinations. They're still going to be proposing IEP goals, identifying what the student needs are, what accommodations and modifications are required. It's just a matter of how to go about incorporating that into this new form. I think there will be a shift with the student voice element, which is very exciting. But that's going to take practice for how to, to go about supporting our, our students and feeling comfortable with the process, with becoming familiar with playing a more active role in the development of their educational plan. And so I see those as wonderful opportunities for growth and also some really wonderful ways to collaborate with stakeholders across the district, particularly with general education and special education. And just making sure that there is time and space in order for that to happen. I think that that is one of the other challenges where with, with scheduling and making sure that there's that dedicated time for those important conversations to happen.
Yeah, I think time is for sure, just the always with everything, right? Always the concern. And I think, yeah, it's just, there's so many competing needs with our small amount of PD time that it's, that piece is a bit of a challenge. One of the other things I like that it does, though, and I was, as I was thinking about challenges, I was thinking then this is something this will help with, too. We see a lot of trying to parse out, especially at the younger ages, for our English language learners. Is this a disability? Is it a language acquisition? So I do like that in this new process, it's also like kind of forcing that, like working together, too. Because sometimes we can, you know, in the busyness, people sometimes move into silos. So I think this process actually is like bringing those pieces together, which is something I think they did well because it's always been there, but it hasn't really been part of the IEP like this, which will push us then for more of that collaboration, which I think is great.
Yes, why, too, right, Jen?
Yeah, exactly. Which will probably be a hurdle, to answer your question is what I was thinking about, but it's also an awesome opportunity, so.
Thank you.
Thirty years in education, it's the first time I've ever heard a shout out to a student information system.
You're welcome. You don't know how much of a relief that was.
So, and I just comment, you know, that, you know, change, change can be scary, but it's also exciting. And it looks like it's changing in a very positive direction on a number of elements here. And I really appreciate you coming in and so clearly walking us through all of it. Because I can really see how this, this could be beneficial. And, and again, you know, appreciate you being here before your, your start date. Thank you.
Thank you so much again for, for having me. And again, just to emphasize, this is a very brief introduction and overview. There are many other components, some of which were, were mentioned about sections for English language learners and also the shift between language of removing a student-wide child as removed from the general education curriculum to how the children, how the child will be included. And so just that, some of those semantics and, and language that is being used is, is super important. So thank you very much again for the opportunity. I'm really excited to, to be here full-time in July.
I know PAC enjoyed seeing you at their meeting as well, so thank you for taking these opportunities.
And she'll be back again to the next one.
To be with us, too.
I'll, I'll be seeing them again on the 10th of June. And so that will be a great opportunity to ask for some input as well as we think about the rollout to families and sharing information if they have ideas. So I'd love to hear them.
And please let us know how we can be your extra hands as well in the community. I think that's something that I've sort of, I'm brand new here. But I, I think, you know, sort of empowering us with information that we can also help to disseminate under the community is really important. Because I think folks, what I've learned about Winchester in my years here is that folks, when they get taken off guard by things, they tend to get more, there's, there's more turbulence that, that comes out. So if there's anything that we can do to help with that, please let us know.
I greatly appreciate that. Thank you so much.
And not to be outdone by Aspen, but I just have to give a shout out to Marlena, too, who has already given a ton of hours, as she's still working a full-time job. So it's been fantastic. It's just, it'll be so much smoother in July, just all this time. But I know that is taking away from your own personal life, so thank you.
I'm glad to be here. Thank you.
We appreciate your time very much. And I won't add anything further because everybody said the things I was thinking. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you can go home.
I already pressed her.
Okay, all right. I think it needs to be said properly, so, yeah, right.
In case you haven't figured out, that Dr. Hackett says that every time.
Please do go home. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. With that, we'll move on to just talking about the restructured out-of-district coordinator position.
If I could, Madam Chair, could I just ask for consideration to have Mr. Lynn go through his items while he is here? He's, and, yes, would like to eventually go home as well for school day tomorrow. So if that, if it's okay with everybody.
Okay, yes, I think we have consensus.
Is he going to do handbook and program of studies, back to back?
Mr. Lynn is gonna, it's, it's a double feature.
Awesome.
Just a reminder to committee members who always ask good questions that these are first readings as well. So this is a good opportunity for Mr. Lynn to kind of give you the highlights of both the program of studies changes and you'll, there are some changes. There are some things that are different this year. I'd like to just credit Mr. Lynn for thinking differently and really trying to work in part with the, the ten additional instructional minutes that we had come to an agreement with the WEA as part of the collective bargaining agreement. And, and this is, he's thought differently about it. There's been a lot of work done with staff and, but it, again, so I just wanted to make sure that you also all understand it's a first reading for you. So, Ms. Jolynn, welcome.
Thank you. So there's two major changes that I'd like to talk about. The first is this idea elective programs. So why are we talking about electives? Some, two reasons. The first one is currently our PE teachers, their, their caseload is just way too high. We have three PE teachers that work full-time. Each one of them is teaching about four hundred-plus students per teacher. And so if we're just thinking about the size of the gym and thinking about the amount of students they have to work with, especially our focus on social-emotional learning, especially thinking about, they're not just teaching basketball, they're teaching students, right? And it's just too much. And the other thing that we're thinking about, when I'm thinking about electives, is just really not a lot of options offered to students. There's really not a lot of choices. Really, the only choice that, two choices they have is band course and orchestra and also world language, which they choose in sixth grade or before their sixth grade, and that's it. Right? So, so to address those two issues, what I'm proposing is to change the required PE, the requirement to half a year. Currently, all students take a full-year course of PE. But it's really not full year because they take PE for the whole year, but out of the six-day cycle, only two of those days are PE classes. And the third day is actually a study hall. Okay? And so what I'm proposing to do is change the requirement to half a year of PE and replace the other half with an elective course, which I'll talk about in just a second. It just so happens that I have the FTE right now in our sixth-grade teachers for those teachers to be teaching that elective course. And I also have a music teacher that has flexibility in her schedule to teach an elective course as well. So what I'm asking the teachers to do is think about something that excites them, that they're passionate about, and teach a course on that, right? And the idea is that I have to transfer their passion to the students.
But can I just clarify, but for all three grade levels, you're just?
For all three grade levels, correct.
You have the capacity for sixth-grade teachers, but it's for six, seven, and eight?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct, correct. So these are the courses that the teachers came up with, right? So for sixth grade, we have a teacher that would be teaching environmental studies. We have a sixth-grade teacher that is, has designed a course called Designing Board Games. And that course will be offered to both sixth graders and some graders. Our music teacher, her passion is percussion. So she has designed a course called Music Around the World, so to explore the different music traditions across the world. And the other options that we are offering to students for all three grade levels is a second semester so PE, because we know some students need that, likes that, and need that. So that would be an option. Currently, drama is a required course for students that doesn't take band course orchestra. So they take half a year of general music, the other half of the year is a drama, is a drama course. So we're shifting that drama to the elective cycle, which means this, that students who doesn't necessarily wants to have drama, has the option of picking the other class, all right? And students who does want drama can actually pick that. So again, the idea of giving students choices, so they're not forced to take a course that they don't particularly have that much interest in. And that's when we sometimes see behavior issue popping up. So in some grade, some of the classes still exist. And the one that's different in some grades, film studies. And I assure you that this is not just going to be all distinct movies. This is an English teacher teaching that course. So she's going to be focusing on a lot of the English standards. In the eighth grade, we have a teacher that her passion is about sports. So this is not necessarily playing sports. But she's very interesting in having students talk about recent history and how that impacts the sporting world. And also how does the sporting world respond to some of the major events in our history? So for example, there's students that doesn't know anything about some of the major changes, the racial breakthroughs in our history, Jackie Robinson, for example. And so that would be something that they'll be talking about. Some students don't know what happened during nine eleven and how our world, not just our world, but the sporting world responded to that. And so in that particular unit, they might talk about what does patriotism actually mean? So there's some very exciting courses that the teachers are thinking about. Again, when I approach the teachers, what I really want them to do is, again, thinking about something that they're passionate about, they really like. And this is something that they like to talk about with students and create a course around that. Okay, so for those of you that's not familiar with the middle school schedule, so out of the seven periods, two of the periods are what we currently call exploratory blocks. And so we run on a six-day cycle, the S1 and S2, which just means semester one and semester two. So currently, a student could have to schedule. So our six-day cycle during the first exploratory block, every other day, that student has PE, except for one of those days, which they don't have PE, they just have study hall, right? The other days on that first exploratory block, one semester could be art. And once the first semester's over, the art switches to technology and engineering, right? During the explore, second exploratory block, every other day, the student has health. And when the semester turns over, the student now has info tech. And on day two, day four, and day six, they have general music and then shifts over to drama. Okay, so that's a current schedule. And so our new schedule that I'm proposing will look something like this, right? So the students in day one will have PE the first semester. And then semester two, it will be the elective that they choose. So if you notice in day five, it's no longer a study hall. So now they're actually receiving instruction. They're actually taking that class. So that student actually has PE again. For a student that picks two semesters of PE, this student actually has a lot of PE, but definitely more than what they're receiving right now. So for that kid that really needs to get their energy out, this is the right course for that particular student. And in this model, the second exploratory block will still stay the same. Okay, next slide, please. So a couple of other benefits right now, because right now our schedule is pretty rigid. And to, the fact that we are freeing up that half of a year of PE now gives students the ability to take both creative arts workshop and band course and orchestra. So there's now a lot more flexibility. And this is actually some of the other complaints that we have for some of the students, that they have to pick one or the other. And there are some students that actually like both. And now they have the opportunity to do that. Same thing, we have students that, and they're typically students that takes course. And right now, based on our structure, if they take course, they cannot take drama. And we know there are students that, if they love to sing, chances are good they also like to act, right? And again, it's just more opportunity for students to be in courses that they want to be. Again, we're not going to be able to guarantee that we give everybody their top two choices. But again, that's better than no choice whatsoever. And so that's the electives. And the other one, which is very similar, and they're connected to each other, is what we're calling flex block. And so what is the purpose of flex block? And this is what Dr. Hackett was talking about. We have the additional ten minutes. So just thinking about how to use that ten minutes. I mean, the easiest way, that's the least impactful to our schedule, is to add those minutes into each one of the seven period. But just thinking about a middle school day from eight-thirty to three-oh-seven, it's a pretty challenging day. And to make the days longer and to make the classes longer, that just doesn't, doesn't make a lot of sense to me, right? And so what we're, what you're going to see in just a second is that we're going to use that ten minutes, add it on to homeroom, which in my mind, it's not a very good use of our time, all right? And put all these times together and we can create a block to do these two things. Number one is to extend what is currently happening in our classes, including social-emotional activities into this twenty-five-minute block. And we all know Macaulay's a huge middle school. It's big for the adults, it's definitely big for the students. Last week, I just was spending time with the incoming fifth graders. And they were like, wow. And I had to say to them, you know, in this hour that you just toured the building, you barely see a quarter of it, right? And so the idea for the flex block is also just to make that community feels a little bit smaller, okay? We also want to make sure that the students have just that trusted adult. So in this flex block, which I'll talk more about, it's going to be about twelve students with one adult. And they're going to see each other every day, all right? And so I'm hoping that we'll have, we'll build a smaller community and all students have this adult that they see every day. So the students know the adult, the adult knows the students, too. Next slide, next slide, please. So one of the possible activities I'm thinking about for this flex block are these things I've written here. I know that, right, usually after October or so, we have a lot of students now coming in for extra help, right? And so some students just cannot, they cannot come in early because they can't get rife on the parents. They can't stay after school, the teachers can't after school. And now we're building a time during the school day that if a child needs extra help, the teachers are right there. They're no longer going to have a study hall. So this will be a chance for them to get a head start on homework. Based on my observation in those directed studying, they're probably be, the most students are pretty productive in the first, first ten to fifteen minutes. But after that, in the first, uh, first ten to fifteen minutes, but after that, in forty-seven minutes, the remaining half an hour, they're just not, they're just sitting there, and chances are good they're trying their best to play games on their, uh, Chromebooks, which again, not a good use of our time. So all the other things that, um, we would like middle schools to do with the supervision of adult, with the, kind of so adult, organizing binders, okay? We will use that time to do some of the current activities that we call prime time, such as anti-bullying, the speak up at school, the anti-racism curriculum that we have. And this year, our SEL coach created a self-care and stress management instructions. That could be happening there, so we no longer have to take social studies or science time out to, uh, do these activities. And we're also thinking, just giving kids who want some quiet time, some quiet time, right? If you like to read, you can use that, uh, part of that twenty-five minutes to be able to read, but just do something to calm your mind. Yeah, and we can definitely provide opportunity for students to do some, uh, student-driven activities. One of the things I often hear middle school kids say is that from homeroom to the minute I get dismissed, there's really no time for us to determine what we like to do, right? And so this will give a chance for us to, um, coach those students how to use time, how to use a student-directed time. Certainly, I'm not saying that it's a free fall, but if we don't give the students the ability to make good choices, right? They'll never learn how to make good choices. Okay, next slide, please. So this is what the schedule's gonna be, uh, uh, will look like next year. So that flex block, uh, we have determined as a faculty that, uh, middle of the day will be best. So it breaks, uh, pretty hectic middle school schedule into two, the morning part and the afternoon part. So the middle part during that time, it could be used just to regather your mind. When you get to that point, think about your morning classes, right? What do I need to do to take home in order to set myself up for success when I go home? And also plan for your rest of the day. And like I said, during that time, okay, the kids are already in the school, okay? They're warmed up already, so for example, the eighth grade civics project can be challenging for some students because they're working in groups, and there's not a whole lot of times for them to organize, uh, time to be together. So now we have a time where all the kids are in school, and they can use that time, uh, to do group work, okay? And middle of the day for our younger kids, uh, that's coming in as really just, you know, still fifth graders, they always complain about, "We don't have recess." So this could be a time to do that as well, okay? To give the kids an opportunity just to be able to shift their mind from studying, engaging in, uh, academic activities to do something that is, uh, more aligned with our SEL standards. Okay? So how will the students be assigned? So right now, I'm thinking that, uh, uh, each teaching staff, everybody, not just team teachers, but including our exploratory teacher, art teacher, PE teacher, our related service provider, S, uh, our SLPs, our special ed, uh, uh, teachers, they all will have a group of about ten to thirteen students. Again, that is your student, uh, that you're gonna be with, right? And all these students will be aligned to a team. So for example, if I'm an art teacher that has a group of students, that group of students could be students from my Oracles team, right? So that art teacher will know what's going on with Oracles', uh, 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 activities. So one of the things they could do is just review with the students during that twenty-five minutes or so, alright? These are some things that the Oracle teachers have assigned. Are you prepared for this, uh, particular test? We know we have a big assignment from the Oracles', uh, social studies teacher. Are you getting a start on that? Okay? And, um, yeah, during that time, all teaching staff are expected to be with students during flex block, okay? So nobody should be correcting papers, okay? People should be working with students. Okay? So that's it, I believe, with flex block.
So the last block, Mr. Lynn, that's kind of like an advisory? Like, if you're thinking about, like, homeroom versus study hall versus advisory? This is more like an advisory where it's interactive?
Um, well, I, well, hesitate to jump to advisory, because I know the schools that have advisory takes years to train the teachers-
Right.
-right, to get them to understand, "How do I connect with students?" Right? So there's a lot of work that needs to get to that. And certainly, uh, some of my plans, uh, right now during the summer with both my assistant principal and the coaches is to create activities for stu-, uh, for the teachers who, this is new to them, to be able to implement-
Okay.
-right? And so I definitely see a lot of potential with the right, uh, uh, support for teachers to do activities that's related to community building, for example, alright? And, um, so I'll hate to right now jump to that advisory model, because like I said, um, you know, based on my understanding of advisory, it takes a lot of work to get the teachers up there, right? Certainly, we have the foundations for that, and I will want to spend more deliberate time thinking about how to support our teachers to be able to get to that point, right? We definitely don't want teachers right now to think, "Oh, during that time, I have to serve as my group of students advisor" because they're not ready for that-
They're not there yet, yep.
-and so I do see that, uh, as an ability to, um, um, to set the stage for that, if we, uh, are able to do so, okay? But I definitely see this year, um, that as a pilot year to see how things go. Because right now, what I do see a lot of potential for is that we just don't have a lot of time, right?
Right.
So here is an additional ten minutes, to me, that's gold-
A gift.
-that's use that as an opportunity for all the things that kids just are constantly rushing, right? They're rushing to come to school early, and they're, you know, frustrated, and they're anxious because, uh, they missed the day, and they can't make up that work. And so now we have this opportunity for them to access the teachers. And again, for me, just be able to make that, that huge McCall School feel a little bit smaller for the students and also for the teachers.
I also just wanna thank you, Ms. Lynn, and I, I mean, I, and I, again, I wanna credit you and, and your staff, and, and I know, uh, I attended a staff meeting, we had some discussions, you did breakouts, and, um, you know, it's, I, I, I love the idea of having this where you're putting it. Um, and I say this because, you know, this is, uh, not as defined as we're able to, uh, define it, really. What I liked about the whole concept was just that it is a long day, seven periods for a middle school student, and we don't rotate, um, is mind-numbing to me. Um, like, I don't know that I could get through a day of your schedule. And I just think this break during this time of the day is just, is a perfect time for kids of, developmentally of that age, just to regroup and gather themselves as opposed to getting dropped off maybe a little bit late and they're running in, we have bus issues at the beginning. I mean, just that morning rush of, um, trying to get into a homeroom, which then just becomes, I'm sure at times, not helpful, because, you know, not all the students are there, and, you know, everyone's just trying to, you know, try to really get themselves ready for the day. But I also wanna be clear about what this is and what this isn't, okay? Just a reminder to the committee that we negotiated ten minutes of student instructional time. So ten minutes of this twenty-five minutes is, is negotiated student instructional time. One minute of the existing class periods, as Mr. Lynn's already described it, is being used in this block too. So those seven minutes are also existing instructional minutes. So there are seventeen minutes, not to, not to put too fine of a point on it, um, and it's not a difficult math equation, but there are seventeen minutes that we have that we can use for instructional time, that teachers can use for instructional time, but it also doesn't mean that there's gonna be another prep. So the contract's very clear about preps-
Let me say that again?
Another preparation for the teachers, right? So the contract's very clear about preps, um, and this isn't another prep. So how we envision, and how Mr. Lynn described it, I mean, I think next year is a, let's see how this goes. It's different. Um, we know that cer- some teachers are gonna use it in certain ways, other teachers are gonna use it in other ways. We're gonna get phone calls, "How come my kid's teacher doesn't do the same thing as my friend's kid's t-" That's just what it is. Um, but we think it's really a good step. If, if it never becomes anything more than a break during the day, in the middle of the day for kids, then that's fine. You know, uh, there's no expectation beyond that. Um, I would love to see us get to a point where it could be even a little bit more time, because one of the conversations we were having is just the amount of pullout that can happen to a kid over the course of a day, like, just to make up a test, or to meet with a counselor, or to receive a special education service, right? I mean, just trying to fit those things into a schedule, you're always, something's always being, you know, compromised as, as a result of that. So, um, I don't think you mentioned, um, prime time, which, did you already mention prime time?
Yeah, um, I, um, prime time involves some negative feelings about some of my staff members, so I'm, we're shifting away from-
And prime time is what?
It's, um, um, what we've been using for the last couple of day, uh, couple of years is for very specific instructions on things like anti-bullying, on, uh, anti-racism, based on the speak-up-at-school curriculum. Um, so we have used that time to deliver that instruction, so that all students six through eight pass the same message, right? And so we've been using it that way. But again, the way we structure prime time, it's, um, um, there's some concerns about how we structure it on the staff, and that's why I'm rebranding it, if you will, calling it something else. And one of the reasons why, uh, teachers, uh, had difficulty with that is that they're losing instructional time for prime time, and now it's a built-in twenty-five minutes, so we can still teach those lessons and just break it up into twenty-five minute chunks, which potentially could work better, because again, it's smaller doses of that information to the students. So instead of, let's say, two periods of prime time, we now can do five periods, it's just shorter chunks of it.
And, and so, thank you. And so I also just wanna talk to the question of advisory. Been doing this a long time. Um, you can't legislate love, right? So, um, what we know about advisors, what I've seen with advisories, uh, that have been, uh, implemented at, at middle schools and high schools, um, is that, uh, it, like our teachers, like our kids, it looks different depending on the teachers and the kids and who they are, right? So some teachers are much more comfortable engaging in lessons that are advisory in nature, some teachers are not comfortable engaging in. So, you know, I, I think we just need to be careful about the term advisory. I think what we're trying to say, I know what we're trying to say, I know what you're saying, is this is an opportunity for kids to have one person, right, that, that they see every day, right, that is part of their academic and social, you know, life, that they can connect to. And we saw some of the data from, I'm sorry, Mr. Nixon, you raised a question about connections to teachers at-
Yeah.
-at different levels. This is an, uh, effort to provide a, kind of a discreet time, uh, designated time, where those connections can potentially become stronger, you know, that trusted adult. Um, but every kid's different, and every kid, uh, and every teacher's different. So how those things come together is gonna be really interesting to see. And so we really just think that this is a good step toward, uh, exploring some of these kinds of things. Um, but as, as much as anything, you know, we wanna make sure kids have the academic support that they need, that they can take a breath in the middle of the day. I mean, they're running from one class to another cla- not running, but, because they can't run in the hallways, right, Mr. Lynn? Um, but there's a lot-
Not enough room.
It's, yeah, it's not enough room, there's, uh, but it is a big school, and, you know, um, it's, I think it, I'm, I'm really looking forward to it, and I, I appreciate the, the time and energy that's gone into it. Um, and, um, you know, um, Ms. Norris is here in the, in the audience, and we, we've had a lot of conversations around this. I think the middle school, uh, school staff has been great, they've been receptive, they've been open to this idea that we don't know exactly what this is gonna look like next year, but I did wanna make sure that we were super clear about, um, what it is and what it isn't, what contractually we have available, and what those expectations can be. And I'm looking forward to seeing what teachers do with it. I think it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be great. And I also love the electives, I mean, I just love that. I, the fact that we're gonna give kids some choices, the middle school, um, is a, we'll see how that goes too, right? We don't have this all mapped out, so, um, but we trust in our people, and, uh, we know they'll, they'll do a great job with it. So, thank you.
And I think that's what I was getting at to Dr. Hackett, is I wanna make sure we're clear with the community as we roll this out, what it is and what it isn't, because, um, we don't wanna set expectations that it might be something that it isn't either. Um, because we've also heard from a lot of middle school parents that they don't want their kids just sitting in study halls, right? They want their day used purposely. So I, I don't wanna, I, I wanted to make sure we were being clear that this wasn't just a sitting around, right, in a study hall for twenty-five minutes every day either, but it's somewhere in between.
It gives us some flexibility-
Right.
And what it does do, is it's shown by the schedule, it eliminates direct blocks, forty-seven minute blocks of directed study, right? Which is great. I mean, that we do not, next year, there will be no scheduled study hall for any of our kids.
Correct.
But yet, there'll be this period of time where the kids can get support, which I think is a really nice balance.
Right. At directed study, there is, um, because the students don't know the teachers, the teacher doesn't know the students, and the teacher could actually, in the same block, have different students coming in. So that particular teacher would not know what are, what does this particular student needs to do. And so they can't follow through with that. And what I'm hoping here is that you have a teacher that's aligned to the team, or is part of the team, and they know exactly what the students need to do. And after a month or so, they know these students, alright? So they know to remind them, "You should be doing this." So when you say you don't have anything to do, "Well, I'm looking at the, uh, the, the deliverables or, uh, the homework tracker that, um, Mrs., Mr. So-and-so is assigning designs. Have you checked in with them? I know you've been out, because I didn't see you the last two days, right? Have you checked in with this teacher about what you need to make up?" And again, back to what Dr. Hackett was saying, we just see a lot of kids right now just running around. They don't have the time, right, to be able to do that, right? And so here's a built-in time to do that.
And without naming then, any names in my family, I will say that having the class start first thing in the day instead of starting with homeroom would have helped, um, get to school on time. So I am curious to see, um, data come back-
Yep.
-from you guys in a year, to see if it helps with some of the tardies and absences first part of the day, because I think that, at least for my middle schooler, there was an association that when you start with homeroom-
It's a built-in buffer.
It's a built-in buffer. But if their math teacher was expecting them to be in their seat and on time, it, it may have increased their-
Yeah.
It may have helped out in my household anyway, just saying.
I heard directly from parents as well, who says, you know, "I'm trying to get my kid, but they keep on saying, you know, it's eight minutes, they're just sitting there, so what am I late for?" And that's a hard argument to make. And the fact is, right now, in that eight minutes, it's not very well-used, right? And yes, there will be some adjustment, and I'll echo what, um, Marlena was saying, change will be hard. And so some of my staff will, you know, uh, will have to adjust to the fact, there are some kids that's gonna be running in late. So we have to figure out how to do it, and my response is, well, the elementary school teachers are doing that. There is no homeroom for, uh, our high school colleagues, so how do they manage that, right? Let's learn from, uh, the people that's already doing it, so it's not impossible. It'll be an adjustment, no sure, uh, for sure, but, uh, it's also not impossible.
Right.
Uh, I think it's very exciting to see these change, I think it's very exciting to see these changes coming along with the flex block and with the electives, as someone who's had a few go through, who's had two older ones go, who have gone through, and one who's there right now. So I think this is really exciting to see. With that, were there any other comments? I would just say, we are at eight twenty-eight PM.
I'll, I'll be really quick. I'll, I'll say, I, I love the innovative approach, um, both to how you use minutes and to giving kids, you know, some space in the day, um, and whatnot. Um, and, and thank you for addressing the point about, um, uh, whether people would arrive on time or not. I think that's a good answer, that, that people maybe will, uh, we don't need that buffer. I was curious, though, in your, um, I, I thought you had mentioned that students who need help with a given assignment or test or something, um, could take care of that during this, uh, flex block. And so, um, I get that you're together with your cohort of twelve and you're assigned a teacher. Do you have the flexibility to leave that room and go to a different room where the teacher that you need help from is? Can they, can people flow between these blocks?
Yes. Um, and that's not something I'll encourage teachers to do, so especially right off the bat. Um, what I am encouraging teachers to think about, especially during the first couple of weeks, is again, establish your routine during that flex block. What is that flex block gonna look like? So one of the things that we're gonna do in our first faculty meeting is to give teachers some, uh, uh, think, uh, some ideas about how you can structure that time. But, um, our plan right now is to locate those rooms, those flex block rooms by team, and a close, as close as possible. So for example, the sixth grade Gemini, uh, flex block rooms will be situated relatively close in a cluster. And so once we get into late October, November, and definitely into winter months, when the academic kicks up, and that's when we start to see some of the absences, because people are traveling and kids need to make up work, that we are now in a routine of flex block. And because your social studies teacher is really right across the hallway over there, we can start setting up system where we can essentially start trading kids, alright? I will take a lot more kids, and these are kids that's doing just fine, alright? So we can do some student-directed activities- So we can do some student-directed activities, like, you know, having some calming time. While the kids that really need to, to help can go over there. While my teacher reminded me, one of the things that we learned from COVID, I don't know if any of you have students during that year that we have the half a year the kids were in the building and half the year not, we actually had a build-in up block when the kids were in the school. And when kids start missing assignment, the teacher just give to that teacher and say, can you administer this test or quiz and give it back to me? So I envisioned that happening as well, right? So now we don't have to give a math block to have the kids miss more instruction than to have a quiz. So I do see that happening. But again, are we going to have kids that miss so much school that require basically days and still before school help? Probably, all right? But at least this minimize some of that. All right, to answer your question, yes, my vision is that once we can do groove of things, and because they're situated next to each other, because they're clustered as a team, that there will be a collaboration among those teacher that works with, let's say, Gemini team, to be able to coordinate with each other and say, you go over there, okay? Or it could be during civic action project, all right? All eighth graders are working on that. So everybody, we're going to give you this time to work on that project, so mom and dad don't have to coordinate driving this kid to the library, driving that kid to somebody's home, so they can work together.
That's great, thank you. I am mindful of the time, and I do have questions. May I?
Okay.
So some of us on this committee may remember, and I know some administrators in the room remember, before we rolled out world language in sixth grade, and did that coincide with your arrival?
My first year.
Your first year. One of the cool things we had at sixth grade at McCall was study skills. And that was a class built into the block. We got rid of study skills as a way to make space for world language expansion to sixth grade. That's a huge transition to middle school. And I heard from many parents that they really appreciated that we had formalized that in the schedule. And for some of our kids who are struggling with executive function, that was really helpful. I'm also aware we had some IEPs that specifically, like, there was some delivery or support in that study skills block, and it went away. Literally this school year, I've heard from a couple of parents who have multiple kids in the house that they miss study skills. So I'm, I'm really excited by what you presented tonight. When you were going through the electives piece, my head went to study skills. And I wondered, is there not an opportunity to find teachers who would be willing to take that on? Because for, for, not for every kid, not every kid found study skills terribly meaningful, but those who did found it incredibly meaningful. And I would, I got excited as you were talking because I wondered if that was an opportunity to get that back.
I think that's something that we, I can certainly, because some teacher did say that, is that a possibility? But I think that's for, first of all, I think executive functioning is something that should be incorporated into the classes. So what you're talking about is very specialized instruction to a group of students that needs much more, a higher level, a higher tier instruction. Is there an opportunity? Yes. Because what I'm thinking about, again, both the electives and also flex block, we're thinking about piloting this for our first year, right? And so our first year, I really want the teachers to focus on what I'm passionate about teaching, right? Are there teacher that with more preparation and more thinking can create that particular class? That there's a potential, right? But for this next year, because we're doing this for the very first time, and also I want to be mindful of the fact that some of the teachers are teaching this class for the very first time, I'd like them to focus on something that they feel fat, passionate about, they feel confident teaching, as opposed to something that they have to learn completely from, from the bottom up. Because one of the greatest fear for teacher is that I'm being asked to teach something that I know very little about. So to answer your question, yes, there's a potential there. And just like Dr. Hackett said, you know, this is really a year for us to really take a stock of, is this something that is going to pan out the way that I imagined it to be? If it does, which I'm hopeful will be the case, then we can start really expanding and seeing how it can grow and think about what are the other needs that we currently cannot meet, and use this structure to meet those needs.
Okay. I appreciate that. And then I just want to talk on the bell schedule. I think I had asked this question. Is there a reason why flex block is at the same time for grades six, seven, and eight? Other than we have a common master clock in one school bill? What is the reason?
The reason is because we want to break those groups as small as possible for that purpose of, just again, making the small, groups smaller. So if we run it at different time, then I'm not going to have, because some teacher is going to be teaching sixth grade while other teacher are on flex block. So if we stop the whole thing, that means every teacher is available, and that will allow me to distribute the kids into smaller groups.
Okay. So that wasn't as clear to me when you were making the presentation, that you're, you're, you're creating the opportunity for kids to sort of, yeah, this eighth, eighth grade student can be going to a seventh grade teacher, right? Sixth, sixth grade student can visit a seventh grade teacher during flex block?
They could, but I don't think that is going to be something that is going to be helpful for either the sixth grade student or the seventh grade teacher, because the sixth grade students don't interact with the seventh grade teacher as much. The reason why it has to be at the same time is so I can maximize all the staff members to be working with kids. Because if I don't, then I'm not going to have all the teachers available for flex block, and therefore I might not be able to make those small groups that I want, because then it's just going to end up to be homeroom.
So, so you guys are clear where I was going with this is, there is a concern of schedule at McCall has been there for years, which is how early lunch is for some and how late it is for others. So this schedule means our eighth graders are waiting another 15 minutes to have lunch.
Right.
And for some, that's not going to go over well. But as you were presenting it, and I was thinking about, if, if I think of flex block, the sixth grade flex block is primarily for sixth grade students and teachers, and the seventh grade is for them, the eighth grade is for them. And this is going to sound crazy, but I almost wondered if that's an opportunity for you to actually break the schedule at that point. If we were able to have flex block at a different time for all three grades, we would no longer have to have 1,200 or how many kids there are at that building going to class at the same time once they hit flex block. I mean, I, I hear stories of kids, and this is, it's unfortunate, there are kids who deliberately knock books out of kids' hands because we're not allowing them to bring back backs to class, which is still something I want to talk about at some point. I've had, you know, kids get computers and Chromebooks knocked out of their hands, the stairwells are packed with kids. Can you imagine what a different place it would be if, once you got the flex block, people sched, the class's schedule started to shift a little, and you could have sixth grade get up and leave the room and go to their class, and then a little later, seventh grade, and then eighth grade? We're talking about more bells and the announcement for that? But I looked at that, and I thought, that could actually do all sorts of things for us.
Yeah, we looked at that, again, you know, if we don't have all the staff available, then we can't create those small groups. So some of our, especially a teacher that we're going to need for flex block, they might need to be servicing their students during that time, and they might not be available. So it's really about making sure that all the teachers are available for us to create those small groups. Yes, the lunch issue has been brought up by the, uh, the eighth grade teachers. And so one of the things that we're talking about is that, is now, is that an opportunity for kids to have snack?
Okay.
So they can, and again, you know, as long as they clean up, as long as they're adhering, being mindful of allergy issues, why not sixth grade? Because if you ask any middle schooler, they can eat at 10.
And that would be the perfect time for it, too.
Exactly.
I don't remember the name of the documentary, but it was on, it was about Bill Gates. And he, as a private school, high school student, was recognized, obviously, for how bright he was, given the task of actually doing the high school schedule, which, to the date of that documentary, said was, it was the most impossible task that he's ever encountered because of the conflicts that happen in trying to make a schedule work at, at any level. So, you know, there are so many great things that we could do, but the schedules are just so difficult. The answer to that is you just have a lot more staff, you know, there's always an answer to it, right? Or you have a longer school day with more staff, bigger building, two buil, you know, there's, but the constraints that we work with are, are just challenging. And I understand, I appreciate the question. I just wanted to make the point, because I, I'd like to see that again, that actually, that documentary, because it was just fascinating. I mean, he was trying to do, he was trying to do a database and calculations, some kind of program to do that, and he just gave up on it.
Well, and, and too, I think it was Ms. Bergstrom earlier, somebody said change is, so, you know, if there is pushback to this, it's important for us to be able to ask these questions. So if somebody said, why didn't you talk about blank, right, we can say, actually, we did.
Right. And I appreciate that. And I'm very sure, as we live through this, there's going to be things that we just did not anticipate, right? And again, this is where we encourage growth mindset. We see this as an opportunity for growth. So if something doesn't work, let's not see that as, well, this is the reason why the whole thing doesn't work. Let's think about how to, you know, think differently and use that opportunity for us to adjust, as opposed to say, let's scratch it and let's not do it, right? It is much safer just to add those minutes to the day, but like I said, that to me does, is not a good use of the time. It's already a hectic schedule, why make each class longer?
It's like Ms. Iselgas was saying.
Snack time, because those, many of those kids are going over five and a half hours after breakfast.
Yeah. And so that's certainly something that I'm thinking about, making sure the parents are thinking about as well, right? And those are things that we can leverage, the resources that we have, the, you know, PFA is a great about helping us with that. Kids who doesn't have snacks or forget to have snacks, we can have that available.
Thank you. It's like Ms. Iselgas was saying, that it's, it's important to keep reassessing your processes. So I think this is another perfect opportu, or a perfect example of that. So thank you so much. Do, are you, we also have on our agenda talking about the student handbooks. And Mr. Lynn is so conveniently here.
He is so conveniently here, but if I could make a second suggestion, given the, the time, that this would be a first reading, I think more so than any year that, since I've been doing this, which is three, which seems like it's been longer. I think the changes to, the changes to the student handbooks are better documented than they've ever been. So Aaron, in the full handbooks, you see all the notes that Aaron meant, took great pains to comment on everything. There was a lot of things that were, again, simply movement from person who doesn't have kids at school yet saying, why is this here and not down here? Those are the kinds of changes that the majority of the handbooks at all levels have been, have made. You'll also see in the full version of the handbooks, there, there will be notes in there very specifically about language that was added, or that's being recommended to be added, and, and to, in many cases, why that language was, was added. So that's the majority of the changes in the handbook. You also have a summary from Mr. Lynn, and I emailed you a little while ago just to give you updated documents or put it all in one place for you, from Mr. Lynn and, and Mr. Mahoney on their handbooks and kind of the specific changes within their handbooks. And you'll, you can see from Mr. Lynn's that they're relatively small. There's really nothing substantive, I think is a fair statement, out of, out of any of the handbooks. Although I would say you might want to spend a little bit more time with high school handbooks, because there are a few things that we're really trying to get at, one of which is attendance. And we're not proposing any new attendance policies or any new, we're just proposing we follow the law and encourage our families to do the same. And so there are some changes in there that you should be aware of. But again, there are changes that are the law, so we should have been doing it all along. And I think it's reminiscent, you know, I think it's just a, you know, it's from COVID, and, and we're just trying to, we're recognizing that our attendance rates aren't where we think that they should be. And, and the high school is really going to be focused on that next year, which I think is great, particularly around kids, our most vulnerable populations are kids who are having the, you know, the higher absentee rates, and we have got to address that as a school department. So all that, just to say, you have, you have more time with these handbooks. You have a policy subcommittee who's already reviewed them once, likely would go back and take another look at them prior to your next meeting. I'm available for any questions. I would encourage you to reach out, well, if you, it'd be good if you could reach out to me, get me questions, because if five of you have questions, then I can get them all to where they need to go and kind of do that offline a little bit. However, if you would like, we can, you can spend more time this evening on them. Mr. Mahoney is not here, because he's at the Citizen of the Year Award making some comments. But I can get him questions, too, so.
Okay. Well, then, with the pleasure of the committee, I would say thank you, Mr. Lynn. We really appreciate it. And we will come back to you through Dr. Hackett with any questions regarding the student handbooks or about if there are any further questions on flex block or the electives at the middle school.
Okay. No, thank you for your support.
How it goes next year.
Yeah?
Very exciting.
I'm sure you'll hear about it.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, I'll take us back to the job description for the restructured out-of-district coordinator.
So this is a first reading, no action. It was, you all know, because you've been here long enough to know it, we, we do have out-of-district students placed for special education's programming. And we've had a, and I don't have the history on it as well as other people here, but we've had a position dedicated to that administrative, important function of making sure those families have what they need, that they're coordinated with schools, the IEPs are being followed, that evaluations are being done when they're supposed to be done. When I got here, and Pam Gerard was here, that position was a part-time position. It's never been a full-time position. And I think since I, three years, honestly, if we just don't even count the Murphy Brown secretaries coming in, I, I, I'm not sure how many people we've had in this role in three years.
Too many.
Too many would be the answer. So the position is open again. We have posted for it. We have received, it is a full-time position now. We made it a full-time position a couple of years ago, or last year. We have a pool, but in conversations around, and we've been talking about, this is not new. Pam Gerard started the discussions, you probably have heard remnants of it along the way. We just really feel like the position is just so disconnected from everything else that we do. And it feels, and I know, because I've heard, I've had out-of-district placements parents say this to me, like, we don't feel connected to the school. Like, we created a special group in Parent Square to make sure our parents have residentially placed kids and out-of-district place are getting information from us so that they're, you know, not being left out of what's happening, and we still miss it. And so, and these students are our students, and they start with us generally unless they've moved in in out-of-district placement. And Jen has done a great job, like, with just things like, who does an evaluation for a student who's out of district if they were in elementary last year, now they're at their middle school? Like, who does that? And so just bringing the spec supervisors along in this conversation, too, to, to just better coordinate. So what we feel would be a really good move for us at this point in time, and Marlena's had a chance to, to, to look at this, too, is to essentially eliminate the out-of-district coordinator position as a single position, create a, an assistant director of special education, which has been a discussion that's been also ongoing for, for years, I know, with that being out-of-district placement coordinator being that responsibility of that position. So they would be in charge of that, which at different times of the year will be 100% of their day. And depending on the year, depending on the needs, would, could, will be less. And, but that person being part of our key leadership team, being part of the discussions with spec supervisors, which Jen did bring that position into the, that this year, being part of our overall leadership team, and being connected to our principals and central office staff in a way that they understand what's happening here, and they have a bigger voice about what they're seeing, and helping us get better at servicing those families as well as maybe finding ways to encourage or to build the kind of programs that we need to keep them from going and bringing them back. As we know, we also have the program supervisor position, which we filled. So we just feel like in tandem, it's an area that we, we see a lot of potential to do a lot better with our families and our students and our staff. We also see potential to start to reduce the number of placements that we have going out, which, you know, it's hard to put, well, it's not hard to put a number on placements, we know what that number looks like. But, you know, we think there's just real potential for us to continue to build our internal programmings and be better coordinator, coordinated, and make sure families feel better connected to, to us. So that's the effort of this, that's the purpose. So that's the effort of this, that's the purpose of this. Jen, Lori, I mean, I'm sure I might have missed something, but I know you've talked to Marlena about it as well.
Yeah, no, I mean, I feel like you hit on all the important points. These are, you know, very often, these are our most vulnerable students. These are our students that needs are so great that we can't meet them. And it is not healthy for them, for the schools we're sending them to, or for their families, for us to keep having this revolving door. It is just not good practice. So we want to support them better, but like Frank said, I think there's just such an opportunity, too, for that connection, because they're either leaving us and going somewhere, because that's what they need to do for their supports, or we're looking to bring them back. They often gain these skills and then they could come back in. So it needs to be better connected to our community. So having it someone who's here year-round, who has, who does know, because everyone's so busy, understandably, but that you get in your silo, right? So the supervisors have their loads that can be very heavy. So that's what they're focused on. And then it's not somebody who's able to see all of that and connect these kids and say, you know what? I think this program could work for this student, so let's work towards that. Yeah, and there's more to it than people think, that you don't, we do our testing for our students. We write IEPs, we have the meetings, we have to go do the visits to make sure. So I think there's a, you know, a misimpression sometimes that this is a small job and it's not. And it's really important for these kids and family to have that level of support.
And I remember when PAC first advocated for this position to be created to the school committee. That was their vision. It's exactly what you're describing right now, so.
I mean, in fairness, just to how we best service students, in 10 years, our special ed population has, you know, like everywhere, exploded. And we have added, thank you, many staff to support that. But where we haven't added is in that level of leadership to be able to support at that level. Like, the unit D has been the unit D this whole time for all of those pieces. So it is a, it's a larger population now, it's more complex, there's more and more things that are happening. There's a lot of responsibility when we place a student out of district, too. We still feel very responsible for them. And it's hard if it's not someone who's here and has made those relationships and is actually going and checking and making sure that things are happening as they should be.
And making sure kids can come back if they're ready.
Absolutely. Always our hope, right? Yeah, no better place than in their community if we possibly can.
So net .5 FTE increase?
No, it is currently a full-time position, but it is an out of district coordinator. So what happens is we advertise for out of district coordinator and.
You get a certain tool.
I thought you had described it as a half-time.
No, it has been, it was started out part-time, it's been part-time, we made it, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's shifted.
Not currently year-round is the difference.
Right, it's not year-round, it's full-time during the year and what, 10 days beyond?
This would be full-time year-round.
Full-time year-round position.
So where I'm headed with this is that was not in the FY, that was not in the superintendent FY-25 recommended budget. So at some point, we can talk about how we sort of monetize this. Maybe not right now, but we have, we have yet to have a conversation as a committee about things like fees. We said we would do that after the close of town meeting. And that's probably going to be like a future agenda item, because we're reaching the end of the school year and I guess families need to know about that stuff. So I'm just, I'm trying to be mindful of what the cost impacts.
Understood, and we would, we have some thoughts on the expenditure side that would, we believe would make up the difference, which is not huge money for what we think the potential would be. Or the cost would be of not having this filled with someone who, because an assistant director of special education is a position that people who want to be a sped director maybe would look at. It's a good step position, it builds us a bench, just as we've talked about with other positions before. But we would be looking at the costs, on the cost and on the expenditure side, to come in with a proposal that would pay for it within the existing approved budget with some reallocation, redistribution of some of our other positions that are.
So not to box you in, but I'm assuming the net impact then in going full year with this job description is we're talking low five figures. The delta.
Trying to do five figures in my head, first of all, to make sure I understand.
But it is 8:55 PM.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if we had no ability to look at the expenditure side, I think I would say 20, 25, $30,000 maybe. But we have an ability to make, to look at the expenditure side, so I think we could bring that number down.
Okay, thank you.
What we'd love to have is some conceptual approval or consensus approval or support because of where we are in the school year. If we were, if there is that, then what we would love to do is advertise for this as anticipated, to get it out there and then come back to you at your next meeting for hopefully what would be final approval. And if we don't approve, then we pull the ad down.
Which districts do? I mean, there are some public districts right now that are advertising for anticipated positions.
Right.
So you're looking for a conceptual approval?
I'm looking for consensus. If you are okay with that idea, then it doesn't really put you on the hook for anything, but it allows us to get out in the market right now. And then we can see what we get, but then more importantly, you can come, when we come back to you, we'll give you our full proposal as to how we think we should pay for it. And you can make a decision as to whether or not you support the overall plan and go from there.
So we could have consensus on posting as presented?
Yes, thank you.
So I'm happy to make a motion to authorize the superintendent to advertise the anticipated position of the 1.0 FTE Assistant Director of Special Ed and Out of District Special Ed Coordinator as presented, with the expectation you will get feedback from the committee on the job description, bring back any updates to us, as well as updated cost modeling and how we're going to pay for it.
Yep. Second.
That's a motion.
That's seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy hiring.
I will move down, okay, policies for first reading, and these are all related to nursing policies. I had, I had prepared a memo, but it came out today, so you may or may not have had time to check that out. These are related to policies that our nurse leader, Lynn Vazella, had brought to us in over a number of policy subcommittee meetings from December to May. Several, and many of them are minor updates to language. We have an additional policy JLCCB that has been recommended. That is probably the largest one here around pediculosis. And this is, was added because it is an impact on student attendance. Previously, students were discouraged from attending school while they were managing pediculosis or head lice. But now this policy encourages the students to be in attendance without being managed. And as one who has dealt with that many a time in the past, I think, I thought that was a good thing. And then the other policies are summarized in the memo mainly as minor changes. And I would say that the next item was around, let me just see, physical examinations of students. Previously, we had said that all the physical examination, where we have our school physician and the school, in our policy manual, it was said that the school physician would take care of the physical examinations of students and particularly of athletes on an annual basis. But as we have a large, a very large number of student athletes, the recommendation from Ms. Vazella was to have the examination, the annual examination provided by your own, by student, student's healthcare provider instead of the school physician.
Which is also consistent with how you advertised the job description for a school physician. I think we had this conversation previously.
Yeah, like, if the examinations are available for a private physician, then you do this, yeah.
Right. The only other thing I would point out, too, is the field trips, it was somewhat more administrative, but, and I'm sorry, I don't mean it, but it would, we just have, now that COVID's over, there's a lot of field trips. And we have students who absolutely have to have nurses on those field trips. And when I say field trips, I mean everything from out of state, international, to where we're going. So what was kind of happening is they were getting scheduled without really knowing nurse availability. So this just puts an extra step in the process for us internally to make sure that we have availability of nursing staff. So we're not flying Lynn back from New Jersey.
I was going to ask you to share that story, because I thought that was impactful.
Yeah, I mean, that's how great she is and all of our nurses are great, but we just had a situation where a student was, it was a student trip to New Jersey and she was asking, she said, well, I can go down, I was just trying to make it work, you know? So I go down the bus and then maybe, would you be okay to pay my way back? And it's like, yeah, I mean, give you a bonus for going, but.
So the, and I was just about to talk about that field trip policy. So in addition, Ms. Vazella had provided a lot of protocol updates and those are all on the website that Mr. Marin had set up for health services. So if you would like further information on the details behind all of these policies, you can see the inner workings on the public, on the district's health services website. And so these, again, are just recommended as a first reading and the documents with all of the policies are included.
Can you take a question?
Sure.
JLCCB.
The pediculosis?
Head lice policy.
Yes.
So as I understand it, we don't have this today.
We do not, and that's why I said it was an addition.
So I just want to ask this question. So if we, if we took a position, we were going to exclude students for some reason, we would want to have a policy for that. But if we're not excluding students for this reason, do we need a policy for that? So it says, it's a new policy, students will no longer be excluded, but they're not currently excluded. I just want to be sure we're not, like, creating policies we don't have to be creating.
So this is consistent with state, with state guidelines and would be consistent with MASC recommend. I understand and appreciate the question. I'm not sure whether maybe it's more of a cultural practice in really being clear about the policy. Because I know that certainly when, you know, when there have been cases of head lice and I grew, you know, I mean, I remember as a principal doing, going through it. I mean, parents also get nervous about getting, having their students get it. And so why are they coming to school? And it's, so I think it just is clear in its messaging to the entire school community about the fact that we expect students to be at school, that it's not something that a student will be quarantined for, that we manage through that process, so.
And I will say, out of personal experience from many a year ago, so back in the dark ages, that very issue perhaps had come up, so.
Ms. Vazella actually said, Mr. Nixon, that we used to have policies where we would send out letters, like, every time there was.
To let parents know there was a case in classroom.
And so, like, some parents that particularly have been through the system for the school district for a long time still expect that. And so this helps give them something to fall back on, too, by us having a policy that describes exactly what our policy and procedure is around this particular issue, that they can, they can point to the policy, too.
Okay. But just to be clear, we haven't been excluding kids as a district, right?
No.
Okay.
I will also just put it on the agenda for the policy subcommittee. There are some typos in the pediculosis policy that we need to probably fix. So the one that's actually here, there's, there's two very clear typos.
And that's why we do a first reading.
First reading.
Yep, that's why I'm just putting it on there for us to.
You have to own remembering that, okay? You just can't put it out there and expect me to remember it.
I think it's better if it's outside of my brain and it's in everybody's.
Someone, someone might remember it, right?
Right, yes, exactly.
That's right.
So. I'm glad, I'm glad that we had further discussion, because it caused me to read.
To slow down and read it carefully.
More granularly and notice the issues.
Okay.
Aaron might have caught that in spell check.
It's underlined, that's why.
Yeah. It was a hint.
So this is first reading?
This is a first reading.
Yep.
And just in terms of, like, approving this stuff as it pertains to, like, handbooks that are also going to be coming, just sort of what's the timeline for this?
So, I mean, the good news about, the good thing about handbooks that we've gone digital is that, you know, things can change and we can make those changes to the online handbooks. And if there's something that's significant, then we would put out a separate notification to parents to let them know. So, yeah. And we're also clear, we have a disclaimer in our handbooks about policy trumps, you know, all this. If there's language in here, it refers back to school committee policy. And in the handbooks, we very, now have very explicitly either put the entire policy in the handbook or reference them to a link, instead of trying to come up with some kind of summative narrative description that may not be as accurate as it needs to be.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for this.
So we have on our agenda those school facilities project updates. We received that memo today as well, so. But we are also at 9:06 PM. So we could continue powering through, or we could read the memo and address questions to Mr. Nixon, or we could come back to this also.
Mr. Nixon, is there anything that we haven't touched on yet that we need to know about timely-wise?
I would just make a, my general heads up to you guys, is there some references in that memo to some projects that the committee is already generally aware of, we talked about last year? And some of it's fairly recent information, things like what to do about mystic heat. We talked, was that December, January, we talked about that? Initial numbers were really high, so that seemed like a non-starter. So, so really, literally, in the past, like, three or four days, we've been getting some information from management and engineering and planning about where some of that stands. As is often the case, there are a number of, let's say, school-based capital projects that, particularly those that are in sort of the realm of building systems, that come to capital and they're being advocated for by DPW. And I've always worked hard with, with Mr. Marin, Dr. Hackett, to kind of make the committee aware of what those are, so that we're not operating in two separate vacuums. Take a look at the memo, familiarize yourself with some of this stuff. We don't yet know what the cost of a new McCall roof is going to be, a new Ambrose roof is going to be. My understanding, though, is that the need for an Ambrose roof is relatively low compared to, you know, McCall and some other project priorities, but town meeting funded some of that work. So there's just a lot of design and engineering going on. The committee may remember that this, over the past year, capital planning did come to the select board and ask for a commitment to a plan for funding, because we were committing a lot of dollars for design and engineering bid packages. And so the reluctance was to put money towards bid sets for projects for which there was no money for actual construction. So we moved forward, town meeting funded that design and engineering of a lot of work. So the hens are coming home to roost this cycle. There are many projects that will be coming to the capital planning committee with some real numbers attached. So review the memo, understand that in terms of context. I think folks at Town Hall are working really hard to get those numbers together. If we had them, I would have put it in the memo, we just don't have it yet. It's going to be a very sort of busy capital cycle for them, pulling all that together. So mostly, this is just about keeping you guys updated. So I hope I have, yeah.
Can I just ask what the nature of the work is that they're proposing, the 750 to 850? Just, is it so much, so much less than?
I don't have really an answer for that. It is substantially less than, you know, where those numbers came in. My understanding is that it, and perhaps, so I don't, my understanding is this may just be driven by, like, a perception of available funding. And don't ask me what source, because I'm not sure, but there are multiple places that money could come from. That for something between 750 and 850, something could be done with. That for something between 750 and 850, something could be done with respect to controls of the existing system, maybe replacing some piping of the existing system, but also some sort of supplemental heat, which I think we had talked about at the upper part, at the addition at Mystic, where they have some split units today, or, or window units. So Weston and Sampson is trying to put together some recommendations. It's kind of like saying, well, what if I, I don't have three or four million to spend, but I have three quarters of a million, what can I get for that? So I think that's what they're working on. But as you see in the memo, we will need to talk about the future of that building as a part of our tenure facilities master plan. We did remind engineering and planning that we just signed a lease with Kids Corner. And I do want to make this point, that I think there is a hope that for this much lower budget and a reduced scope of work, it's something that could actually be done this coming fall. So again, not sure how the funding for that works, because what's next is Fall Town Meeting, but if something needs to get done quickly before the heating season, not really sure what that scope looks like, but hopefully would not be too disruptive to the tenants in the building. Happy to share more when I learn more, and we will soon.
That's great.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is looking at the twenty, or the summer school committee meeting dates. And I know we had a list from the last meeting.
Yeah, can I just throw some dates out to you? Just looking at, those of you who have been able to, have some sense of what you, summer break, vacation times look like, and just trying to work around that, understanding we're never going to be able to get everybody. But again, if we could take a look at the week of the seventeenth of June for a final meeting for the committee, next, your next meeting is the eleventh.
Why can't we meet on the twenty, 11th and 25th?
We have, well, we probably can, I mean, depending on, we have members out both those weeks, so.
Okay.
We could.
I personally will be out that week.
Right. And your time zones will be different, too, so.
It'll be a rather large gap.
Yep.
And I'm, I'm available during the day on the 25th. That was a date that had been thrown out.
Oh, okay. And I knew that, I thought you had a conflict, too.
I do in the evening.
Yep.
Yeah.
I would be available.
I blocked the 25th when I scheduled.
And I thought, so I, and apologize if I was, so I, yeah, I had a concern, just because my evening was booked up, but then I thought the response back was, we were looking for a daytime meeting, which I could do.
Yeah, which we can do. Well, I, I mean, we're here whenever. We serve at the pleasure of this committee, so.
I could do that daytime meeting during the 18th, although I think I heard that there were some who were flying or.
Well, just think about it, we don't need to answer it tonight. We'll come back to you on the 11th. And then dates that we just kind of looked at as possibilities are July, July 18th, which is a Thursday. We would be thinking remote, and we'd be thinking morning, like 10-ish, but that's also clearly flexible. Tuesday, August 6, we were thinking 4:30-ish, but that can be flexible. Tuesday, August 27, which we can be flexible on a time, too. Kind of thinking that probably 8:06 would also be remote, and maybe 8:27 would be in person, because we're, we'd be rolling back into school.
And did you say July 11th?
July 18.
Eighteenth.
Okay. August 6, and August 27.
I'm likely away the 27th, but you'll, you'll probably not have everyone for all of these.
You just put August on your, I just, it was so much, you just said August.
I did?
Yeah, so I didn't have a lot to work with.
I'm only on the very beginning.
There's 31 days there that I, you know.
Yeah, there's three weeks in the middle that I'm here. Wish I would have gone the whole month.
So.
I might not be awake. I'm traveling from another time zone on the 26th.
Okay.
But I'm happy to be there in whatever awake, level of awakeness I.
Okay. I'm not leaving the time zone, so. Okay, that's it. So if we can, we'll loop back to you again.
Okay. All right. Future agenda items, we have elementary, little elementary literacy study updates that we've been doing, subcommittee updates, and the WIMPAC end of the year report. Sorry. Any other suggestions? Yes?
Fees.
Fees. Yep, I think I wrote that down.
Yes. Fee discussion, yes.
I mean, we're budgeted for the same fees we had last year, right? So it would be a discussion whether we wanted to reduce or increase that. We base the budget based on the fees remaining the same. Am I, am I crazy?
Not saying you're wrong, but just for the record, so, you know, we acted on a recommended budget, we made some modifications late, including to address, you know, literacy, and every time we talked about the budget, there was the footnote, which is we still haven't talked about fees.
The only thing you have done is you set the preschool tuition, which was great.
That's true.
Yes, so, which is tuition fee. Yep, well, we'll be happy to come back. And we're doing, Andrew's going to do an operations update at the next meeting, too, so.
I just didn't want to make people, like, the community nervous, like, the fee structure we currently have is part of our budget the town meeting approved, correct?
We had, yes. We had grand plans on, not only, we had grand plans on doing a fee study and review, which fell apart along the way, but the finance subcommittee was going to look at that last year. We just were never really able, there was this, obviously it didn't rise to the top of the priorities, but, but I still think that's important. I think we, we do need to kind of, and we do have data, so it's not, you know, it would be a hard, you know, heavy lift to look at, well, how do we compare, where are we? But there was also conversations, you remember, with the former committee of just eliminating all fees, is that the goal, and how do we get there, what's that plan look like?
We're rethinking structures, and I, I had said to the committee, I have, like, some really interesting research, even goes back to JD did in other districts once upon a time, that I'm happy to share, and Ms. Bergstrom has reminded me, I haven't shared it yet. So I'm happy to do that, if that, if that can help drive a sort of conceptual conversation.
Yep. I do think the point Ms. Bergstrom's made, just about, we don't want parents panicking, that we're going to jack fees, you know, in July, autumn. So we're good on our budget in terms of, well, you know, as good as anyone can be. That's what we, we're counting on those fees. And also, Andrew is working with Michelle Kingdom and Mark Oria to really, Mark's been pretty, really pretty accurate on the fees coming in, but there's some, you know, there's some work to be done on, just really trying to nail down those processes as well, so, including budget.
And bus fees were already open?
Yep.
200 registrations so far.
200? Good.
So for someone who's new, is there a way of getting, is there a document that we have that expresses the current state of where fees are?
In terms of what we currently charge?
For all of these different areas, like, is there sort of an omnibus?
Not in one location, right?
Right, that's what.
Yeah, Andrew can get to you.
Yeah, our notes on, I can share something.
Yeah, I mean, if, if it's not too much work to get sort of consolidated, like, documented, because to Chris's point about sort of where are we headed with this, right, I think it might help to start from us understanding.
And where we were on this before Dr. Matthews, too, is how far do you want to go with that?
Right.
Because do we only include, like, preschool and sports fees and transportation fees, or do we talk about additional things that we ask parents to pay for, like music or after school or anything like that? And I think that's where this committee had, at one time, assigned a subcommittee to do that, that it just never, never followed through on. So I would ask, what question you're asking, too? Like, are you just asking the fees we currently?
What we're currently doing.
What we're currently doing, I think.
Right, but within the scope of those three things, transportation and preschool and sports?
Because there's also music.
Because there's also music, but we don't always talk about that here. So that's what I'm asking.
I think all of those things are relevant.
Right, but that might be bigger than the next meeting, is what I'm asking.
No, but we can, we can get the data.
I think just getting the data together in one place.
What we're looking for here is just a summary.
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think what we're looking for here is just a summary.
Yeah, of all the things.
I think it would be good to have it all. I just want to make sure what we're taking on, too.
No, I think we should, if it's possible, right, if, you know, to get all of it.
We can make your dreams come true on this.
Yikes.
And then we can have the further discussion then.
I love data.
And related to that, Madam Chair, so, you know, once upon a time, pre-COVID, this committee, you all remember, we kicked around ideas about possibility of, you know, owning or leasing vans for athletics transportation, because the cost of a yellow bus, and we talked a lot about that, didn't make a lot of progress on that. That might be something to talk about, too, at some point.
And I tell you what, all, your dreams are going to come true on the 11th of June.
On the 11th of June?
The 11th of June is going to be a big day. Okay, going to be a big meeting where you're going to go, wow, I couldn't even, I didn't even dare to imagine that we could have this much information.
This much information? Awesome.
Yep, yep, so. We have some ideas about the athletic transportation.
That's why I mentioned it. But I still want to, but I'm saying, does it impact fees, right? You know, if, if, if there is a change to be recommended, is it cost neutral? Does it, does it bring us flexibility as a district?
Right.
Does it potentially bring savings to us as a district? And what's our disposition on that? Should we be passing savings along to families, or are we doing something else with that? So some big sort of stuff out there to think about.
And by savings, you mean?
Cost avoidance.
Okay. Just to be clear, fees do not cover our costs.
There was a former Select Board member who used to say that all the time. It's cost avoidance, it's not savings.
Yeah, I was going to say, if we had the totality of the information, so, you know, the, the amount of the fees, but also the amount the district contributes, the number of students, because, you know, it's a, it's a bigger, it gets really tangled as it gets going.
Yeah. You saw a lot of it through the budget process, actually. We did, so we'll just get it.
All in one place.
I want to say we, I mean, Andrew.
I'd also suggest, as a future agenda item for next meeting, to talk about, given the sound of schedules around the table, what we expect to accomplish over the summer, because the summer's a little different than the school year, and perhaps that we need to make a summer plan, so that we, a summer plan, because some of the work may be happening in subcommittees and things like that, to bring back to the larger committee. So at the 11th, we should probably talk about that, and also subcommittee reassignments, as future agenda items.
Already in the head.
I need to also share with you all, the Capital Planning Committee, I believe, is going to have its first meeting of the summer capital cycle on Wednesday, July 10th-ish. But department heads have been asked to put forward.
Right.
Capital priorities. Can't remember what that deadline was, do you remember? You know, I think it's in, like, the next three or three and a half weeks. So schools generally is the caboose on this. We generally come in last, but still within the overall schedule. So remember, capital, we're going to start meeting, I think, on July 10th, and we'll be meeting every week, every Wednesday. My expectation is we'll be looking to rank projects probably on July 31st, certainly no later than August 7. And so then, what we need to do is kind of work that.
Work backwards.
Go backwards, exactly. So now you got to go backwards, right? So, so let's say we're one of the later sort of proponents. I mean, it's going to be, like, literally town clerk, board of health, you know, they can get, they've, they've got very few sort of requests. It's easy for them to get it in. DPW will have equipment, police, and fire. What I've discussed with Mr. Marin and Dr. Hackett is that we, it would be ideal if, as a school committee, by, you know, the end of June, we're.
June 28.
We're, we're voting, we're, we're actually voting on, like, what our priorities are, but we're doing what we need to do to feed everybody information, so you can come to that meeting prepared. Over time, and Ms. Bergstrom said this last summer, you know, the number of proposed capital projects has been going down, to some degree, because we've been, like, replacing old buildings. And as I said a few minutes ago, we have a lot of projects we've already indicated support for, that are actually in design and engineering right now, for which there doesn't seem to be an obvious source of funding to actually get it done. So I'm not expecting that we'll be bringing forward a big list of things. We didn't get into it tonight, but, but definitely want to talk to you guys about what's going on here at Winchester High School with the concrete deterioration. That's in the memo, you should review that. I'm hoping this month, we'll have some tests done in the building and be able to share with you guys, but it may not be until, you know, early July, whether that's really going to be effective. So I think maybe just a couple of projects are going to come to the school committee and say, where do we want to put our, our business? So just to be thinking, so future cap, capital project priorities should be an agenda item.
Big future meeting, future meeting date, June 11th, where all shall be really revealed. And then I think we will be discussing the, the summer meeting dates at that time. So with that, I would take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.